Job description for the library guy for the file.
Oh, awesome.
All set?
Yeah. Also.
You made it for the meeting, Kathy?
Yeah, Joe Demore was wondering about it.
Can you make a note?
Yes.
In the spring, we usually have the.
You're allowed.
We're good?
I'll get you later.
All right, we're going to open the Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, March 29th at 5:32. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, founded and undergone by the miserable, liberating justice of all.
Change the agenda a bit. We don't have any public comments. Jason, do you want to do the warrants?
Sure. I make a motion to approve payroll warrant 21-39 in the amount of $172,576.09.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Make a motion to approve bill warrant 21-39 in the amount of $1,423,131.42, which breaks down to the town, $19,947.97. Water and sewer, $5,813. Payroll withholding, $35,252.20. Light bills, $311,146.47. Grants and revolving, $15,812.37. Kentucket assessment, $920,855.41. Whittier assessment, $114,304.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, we have approval of the minutes. Do we know what minutes those are?
There was an emergency.
Even better. We don't have any appointments. Even better. And next up, we have the common vic for Jeff and Maria's. Is he outside?
Hi.
Hey, what's up? How you doing?
So we have your common vic license here. And I asked you here because I'm a bit troubled about the way the situation unfolded. So to recap for everybody, about three weeks ago, Catherine was talking with you about the necessity to have that information required for the common vic license to be renewed.
Okay.
There was a deadline for that previous Thursday before that Monday meeting of the 15th to have that information in.
Okay.
It did not come in.
Okay.
Catherine showed me an email that following Friday that you had submitted the information. I had talked to Catherine and said, given the situation, he's a business in town. I want to try to help him out. I will try to put him on items not reasonably anticipated for the agenda.
Okay.
Add exposure to myself, because I'm not supposed to bend those rules, right? But I said, I want to try to do this. I was then informed that I cannot do that by Mr. Pecos because it is something that is not reasonably anticipated. So it did not make that agenda item.
Okay.
Subsequently, you had then opened for business, correct?
We did on Monday, on that Sunday.
On that Sunday, without that common vic in place.
That's correct.
Correct. And then you had sent an email to Catherine that had basically said, you open for business because that was your timeline, and if you need to find me, find me, correct?
Um, that's not the exact words, but I have the email still.
Yeah, I have it, and I'm reading it. And basically, it says you can find me. So, to be honest with you, I did try to help you outside of the norms of what I should have been able to do.
Okay.
I was not permitted to, or else I would have done it. My problem is, is that it seems like it's just a, I'll do what I want to do, and you can find me as you see fit, which I don't agree with. And I know that you're friends with Mr. Watson here, and this is not the first time that he's not been involved with something that's going on over Jeff and Maria's that I don't agree with. So.
Am I able to see that paper?
This?
Yeah.
This is your email.
That's the exact email, where it says you can just find me?
Yeah.
That's what it says?
It says, find me if you need to find me. Am I wrong?
I'm still trying to find it.
No, it doesn't matter. So the board can approve.
Well, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what word it's anybody's name, that's all I'm trying to.
So the board can approve your common vic license. They can approve it with a delay. They can charge you a fine. They can do whatever they see fit. That's up to the board. I have my own opinion on it, and if the board people want to talk about their opinions, they're welcome to. But to be honest with you, I'm quite angry about the situation.
You have a right to be angry, but you haven't heard my side of the story yet. So my side of the story has got to that. Every year, if you go to Florida, this is nothing new. We open the 21st every single year for the last seven years.
Mm-hmm.
So when I get back on March 1st, March 2nd, I try to come to town hall, do more stuff, town hall's closed. I get it. So I came back the second time, town hall's closed. I tried making phone calls to each department, town of Florida, finance, I even, so I, no return phone calls. I had no choice. I know, I know, I know Ed. I'm like, Ed, what do I do? He told me to call this number that gets to the selectmen's office, which is Catherine. I called, I left a message. Three days later, she returned my phone calls, okay? And by that time, I told her I'm already in a line. I'm not, I wasn't allowed. I was away. I didn't mean to sound like anything like that, but I was away. I tried weeks to try to get to the town hall though. I know in the pandemic, but it's hard doing emails and phone calls where no one responds. It's hard. So I tried. Not that I didn't try. So, but for the past seven years, we open the same day. It's never been changed, and it's always been contingent on our health inspection. We've got our health inspection. We pass no problem. We pass every year no problem, not a problem at all. And I just thought, and I was almost just, just, I don't know, I was just doing what happened from 2002 to 2003. You guys, I had no time window when I was away. So when she was emailing me, I wasn't in town. I couldn't get anything down there. I couldn't get down there. So I said, can we try to push for Monday? That Monday, when I dropped her the stuff, and it, successfully did it. And I thank you for taking the papers, and I heard it didn't go through because of my health inspection, which, again, it's been, we've never had our vic license before a health inspection in seven years. So I don't know what changed now. That's the only thing. So that was the only thing that hadn't passed. I was, that's why I was frustrated. And then the only reason why is that we did open on 21st. I have people from Florida coming. I have people here in California. I have people here from Rhode Island. I just had it on that one day, and I told us we're closed. The rest of us, the rest of us, eight days, you know, and lose thousands.
Mm-hmm.
We did the right thing, and we lost thousands of dollars, okay? And I respect you guys. I like you guys, and I don't want to step on anybody's feet, you know? I was, I was at the point where we can't, I have staff, we were going to open and pay fines, but I didn't want to disrespect any of you guys, and we stayed closed, and we still have an open debt. And that's my story, and that's the real story. And if I, I'm trying to look at the email I sent her saying it's my time or whatever, but you know what? I was frustrated, and I.
I get the frustration. I get the frustration. The problem is, is that you're not supposed to open without a common vic license, right? And I'm not here, and the town's not here to chase you for it. It's your responsibility to get it to us. So we can get, I understand that, and I understand the pandemic, and I understand there's a bunch of things that are in play here.
I get you, but we tried for weeks, so I don't know what else you want me to do. I can't magically open the doors or I can't magically get emails. I tried. What do you want me to do? I tried for weeks to try to get in touch with you guys.
So you could, so.
That's where the frustration of the emails came from, because I feel like that we're not a new business in town. I think we're a great asset to grow, and I just felt like we're getting treated like, what's going on here? Nothing has changed since 2014. So I honestly, I just felt like we're getting treated as like, if we're in a business building in town, nothing has changed at all, you know? It's like, I'm still, I love this town. I have so much respect for every one of you guys. I really do. It's just that I just felt like that something just happened that.
And I felt like I'd stepped out of my zone to try to help you on that Friday.
I thank you for that.
And only because you're a business in town, and you're an established business in town, and I felt like I should try to help you. Granted, I couldn't because I wasn't permitted to, but then we get the email that basically says, find me, you know? And I, and I don't understand why that came across that way. Then I was looking at it like, well, jeez, you know, I'm frustrated now, and all I was trying to do was help somebody, right? So I get it, there's frustration on both sides. There's a lot of things in play. There's stuff that we have to contend with, with the town hall being closed and everything else. I'm just saying that I am not a fan of the way the whole thing transcribed. I'm sure you're not a fan of it.
I'm not a fan of it either. I hate, I don't like, and I honestly, I'm looking at the emails, I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I can see, I get some pesky phones where I haven't, where I said I haven't had a seat at a town hall in 15 years. Ice cream business life in Georgetown, Georgia. This is the first time this ever happened.
Yeah.
Since 2006, we've been opening on March 21st, that's all. And it was just very hard just trying to get in touch with the town hall.
But in all that time, your common vic was never delayed or anything. It made it in on time, and all the things were processed correctly, correct?
Yes, and the town hall was open, yes.
Kevin?
Chairman members of the board, it's pretty apparent that the gentleman was trying to contact us in combination of COVID and the fact that the building isn't open, in which case he would have come in and found people here and had would have taken care of the issue, combined with the fact that Catherine's hours were very part-time. And I'm quite sure that the claim that we didn't get back to you for three days and you called is true. In fact, I verified that today. Having said that, it is clear, Massachusetts law is clear as the bell. You cannot operate a food service business without a common vic's license, and in your case, a cream and milk handler's license and a food handler's permit. Now, your two board of health permits are still intact until June 30, but this one expired. I think what the chairman has aggrieved about, and I'm sure the other board members, is that when the confusion occurred, you somewhat audaciously said to the chair, I am opening anyways. I've been doing licensing in Massachusetts cities and towns for 40 years. I have never heard of a vendor just basically thrown down the gauntlet to the licensing authority and said, buzz off, I'm doing what I want. That was incomprehensibly arrogant. I'm not going to call it anything else because it is. Now, having said that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the statute is quite clear. It says, a business that operates without a license is subject to a $100 fine, maximum fine. In this case, it is very clear that there was some confusion, that there was some delay that would not have happened if COVID had not been the case. My recommendation to the board is that you impose a small fine and grant the license. The inspections are done. The inspections pass, no problem at all. The gentleman has said in his own email, I'm going to open. Find me. It's right there in the email. I've seen it too.
That is 100% true.
So my suggestion to the board is, take the gentleman at his word, find him, be reasonable with it, make it small, but make it a message, and then let's move on. That's my suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
So we don't need to vote on this, right? All we have to do is sign it, I believe?
No, you actually have to vote it.
We do have to vote.
Yes.
All right, so someone want to make a motion on this?
What, approve the license?
Yes.
So moved.
Well.
What?
Approve the license, approve the license with a delay, approve the license with a fine. What do we approve?
Approve the license to go forward. I think we just need to get beyond this.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? No?
I personally don't want to find anyone. I think this is, you know, what Cool Hand Luke would say is a failure to communicate. Just going forward, I know this has happened in the past, if you could. I know my cell phone number is listed on the website.
All of them are.
Call me.
Yeah.
I can get ahold of.
He probably emailed mine at the mall, but I didn't get anything back. So I asked him if I could talk him over more about it. I don't know if you got those emails, or you knew me twice.
I got them. I figured we'd wait till tonight.
Okay, no problem.
There isn't anyone that hasn't called me I don't get back to within a couple of hours. And maybe I can't solve your problem, but if I understand it, I can help get you, you know, the resolution you're looking for. So that'd be my only ask, that we really make a conscious effort to go back to pre-COVID and get all the stuff, you know, lined up, all set, and we want you to open. We love your business.
Thank you.
All right, we just want you to do it the right way.
Hundred percent.
Jason, anything? All set?
All set.
All those in favor? I'll abstain. You moved. You all set?
All set.
All set.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing. Jeff listens to arrogant person.
It's all right, we all have tempers.
We really did have someone flying into.
Does he have a disease?
I get it.
Yeah, Bill Simon.
We can pick it up tomorrow.
From Florida. He's got what he's been about multiple people.
I get it. I get it.
I appreciate it.
It's not, it's nothing personal. It's just, you know, communication.
I apologize, but.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if the board can sign the license tonight, there's two copies. One is effective immediately.
Yeah.
Then Catherine will leave it with Michelle, and the gentleman can call tomorrow to the treasurer's, to the assistant treasurer's office.
Okay.
And you can make a time to meet her at the door, and she'll give you the license tomorrow, okay?
Call the treasurer?
Yeah, in fact.
I can't sign if I want. My kind of.
If everybody puts their signatures on it, we can give it to them right now.
Okay, why don't we do that?
All right.
We'll all sign it now?
No more confusion.
So we can sign it now? Let's do that.
And I'll be down for hot dogs and ice cream.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I came down last Monday to talk to you, but I didn't know you weren't open on Monday, so we would have got this all worked out.
Sign the right one.
Yeah.
Upright.
All right, all right, never mind.
Everybody likes ice cream.
That's my name. What do you want me to do? Sign it again?
You can sign it for someone else. You can sign my name.
What's up?
That's your speaker, microphone. I know, we have these funky ones.
Don't say, don't say anything bad on the.
The town government study group on here?
They are.
I mean, are they on the?
Yeah.
We should warn people.
If they're not on, we'll move on to something else.
They're on at six, Joe Tommy. Joe, Tommy, you said six.
All right, then let's try to get something else done. Town meeting planning should go pretty quick. Everybody see the seating chart?
It's lovely.
I mean, this is going to change in the next month and a half, right?
Yeah, so here's the deal, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Last year, apparently, you put, this is the seating chart from last year.
Yeah.
Which was, which is different than what you've traditionally done, because last year, you wanted to get the board and the finance board up on the stage in order to make more room on the floor for more people with the six-foot distancing.
I was on the floor last year.
This year, you're going to have three-foot distancing.
Yeah.
And if you return to your old procedure, then you would be against this wall over here, where you see one, two, three, four, five seats.
I get it, yeah.
You'd be against this wall. The audience would come in and then occupy, let me do it this way. You'd be on this wall, the audience, people come in this way, the seats are all oriented toward here, and non-voting guests are up on the stage. That's the normal.
But this is.
That's what we do.
But it's up to you what you want to do. That was what Beth told me today.
This is as of today's guidelines.
Right.
Right? So at the end of May, those guidelines could have changed, and this could be all redone to be more accommodating to more people.
Yeah. The guidelines right now that are put up by the governor say 100 people on an indoor gathering, but the guidelines don't pertain to town meetings. Town meetings are not regulated.
Okay.
You can do whatever you want.
There we go.
Let's do them down by the river.
Except we have to have three feet, right? It's the number of people. Let's, KP Law just sent us something today.
You can do pretty much whatever you want within the guidelines of good reason and safety. So right now, three feet is the new rule. So you can put yourselves and unregistered guests wherever you want. This is just the configuration you used last year. But I do need you to decide because we need to get this, there's a lot of work to get this all set up and prep, so.
I'm fine with any one of these. I mean, this is more of what we did last year. Three or four years ago, it was like that. So this is the cafeteria where you go in and out. Remember when we had tables over here?
Yeah.
This was three or four years ago.
Oh.
The last three years, it's been like this.
We've been on the stage.
Right. And then been other things below there.
Well, last year.
We were on both levels.
We split the stage.
Yeah.
To keep the six foot.
Right.
Right.
So there were people on the stage and then people right below the stage in chairs. I, now that we're at three feet, we probably can all be on the stage safely.
Sure.
Yeah.
We could put you below, below the stage in the front there, right under, if that's what you want, whatever you want.
Do you want this one?
I'm like the anti-pen guy.
Here we go. Try this one.
I haven't used this all day.
I haven't used that one at all.
If this doesn't work, I'm leaving.
Mr. Danny, we can have one side of any one of the plates as well.
Yeah, so you come in, the regular entry, probably exit the side door.
Okay.
So, or the back. So do we want to approve this as standing, or what do we want to do?
Chairman, does that put us on the stage and then?
This would be us on the stage.
Yeah, like the old one.
Well, the original way, yeah.
Right. I prefer that.
Well, someone make a motion to approve this type of setup.
What do you want me to call it?
Exhibit A setup? I don't know, I mean.
Exhibit A setup.
Just say, set up according to the chart, attached to the minutes, because these actually get attached to the minutes, this chart.
Okay. So we'll set up according to this chart, they'll be attached to the minutes. Motion made. You want us to vote on this?
You have to.
Okay.
Consensus for voting.
Well, consensus is fine, okay.
Do we have a consensus? Are you okay with that?
Yes. Can we get a second on that? Should we get a second on the motion?
He said consensus, but I mean, we can.
It seemed to work out better the last couple of years with the, the non-voting people along the.
Along the wall.
Along the wall, because people come in the door and lean up against the window area there, or sit in the chairs over there. So that seemed like it worked better with them over by the cafeteria, by the kitchen area.
It's not a lot that has to go into it. It's just, do we agree with it or not?
Yeah, the configuration sits how many people? Kevin?
I'm sorry?
This configuration seats how many?
Um.
Three feet apart?
I don't know that that's necessarily scaled, but based on, I went over and looked at it, and based on the room and a three-foot interval, I'd say you'd easily get 150 people in there without any trouble. We had, we had the table gentleman, his name, Catherine, the principal, myself, and we all stood there and ate. Everybody else had experience from past years, and they all felt strongly that with a three-foot interval, you would not need to have a second room set up. We would be able to fit the audience easily in one room.
Yes.
So that's, you know, I mean, unless you get, I don't see there's a lot controversial on the warrant this year.
Right.
That's going to draw an unusual crowd, and they tell me a normal crowd is 100, 120 people, and that will fit easily with whatever configuration you take.
Yeah? You're good? I'm good. You're good?
I'm good.
Good. Here you go. Consensus. Joe, are you ready? Can we go on to something else while you set up?
Why don't you do, you've got something before me. Go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to jump around, so if you want.
As long as you don't do the dog park tonight, we're fine.
No. So let's.
I can't be until 10.
Let's do the item not reasonably anticipated, which is this, growing reflect renewal service that came in over the weekend, basically.
Yeah, apologies, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the part of our cable function, functioning, and it was not understood that that expired, actually expires.
Today.
Today. And so it would have been added to the bill warrant had we gotten it in time. We didn't, so think of it as an extra bill and the bill warrant, but it will require a separate vote because it's not in the warrant. You voted favorably tonight, we will get it in.
So the bill is for $1,200. I'm guessing Chris, or Kevin, it's an annual service?
Yes.
So it's $1,200 for the live streaming service that we use.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the bill for cable cast community media.
Yes.
For our $1,200.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Joe, you're up.
All right, well, thank you. Really appreciate your time. What I wanted to do, first of all, is thank you. At the, on March 15th, the Board of Selectmen voted to move forward with putting a warrant article on the town meeting this year to propose to the voters at the town meeting as to whether or not we'd move forward with the town administrator. And without going into the details, you did accept all of our recommendations. Uh, and so what I wanted to do tonight is two things. I wanted to, first of all, respond to a concern...a couple of concerns that Selectman Watson had brought up. And then, secondly, I want to do a little bit of a deep dive, about 10 or 15 minutes with you, uh, as to what the committee is considering in terms of what this will cost, because that is a big, big issue. What will it cost us to implement the town administrator? So...so let me first, um, again, congratulate the board for making the very important decision to move forward. And, um, our committee will stand behind you to support you at town meeting, and we are looking for direction as to what role we should play. We certainly cannot be and should not be the presenters, because this is something that we feel very strongly is something that the Board of Selectmen owns as an important issue for the future of this town. However, we will play a role to support you in any way that you feel, you know, would be helpful. So my colleague Ruth from the Finance Committee is here also to help me with the presentation. But without any further ado, let me first respond to, um, a very legitimate concern that was brought up by Selectman Watson during March 15th, of which I was not here at that meeting. And that is the idea that I had introduced before this committee had even convened, and that is the non-binding referendum at the ballot, which is a perfectly valid consideration. So, I'm going to offer you my opinion, but I'll also offer you my support. My opinion is, the town meeting, as I've mentioned before, is a legislative body that is created one night a year, and it's a very powerful body. It is a true reflection of the will of the people. Now, uh, we can say the same with the ballot, but this type of implementation cannot be done at the ballot. So the only thing you could do, almost as a survey style, would be a non-binding ballot question. Do you want to have a town administrator, yes or no? Personally, and this is not a reflection of my committee, but personally, even though I introduced that as a concept, something that you can consider doing, I don't believe it would be beneficial to you for a couple of reasons. One of them is, it can get messy. What if at town meeting, people say yes, and at the ballot, they say no, or vice versa? And then, at the end of the day, someone's going to get upset, because ultimately, no matter what we say at the ballot, it doesn't count. So if we can promote the idea and are successful in implementing it at town meeting, I believe that that should...should do it. Now, with that said...with that said, don't underestimate my personal commitment to you and also from my committee. We will support you. So if tonight or some night between now and town meeting, this board decides that you want to, uh, go ahead and move forward also with a non-binding question on the ballot, I'm not going to just be silent about it. I'll get up there and make a presentation about that as well to support you. That we've discussed it, was a consideration, you decided to move forward. I'm not going to go out there and say, "I don't believe in that, that's a good thing." I'm going to say, "Yes, this is the Board of Selectmen, this...they feel this is an important step." I'll find some words to promote it, to support you.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions? Ed?
Uh...
Comments?
Yes.
You're going to have to speak up, this...this unit is really loud, so...
Well, we can shut that off.
Okay, yeah. I didn't bring my hearing aids. Thank you.
Um, a couple. I still think that it's a vote that should be put off based upon the, uh, the virus, the pandemic. You're not going to get a lot of people that would normally be going to town meeting. So I would rather see, uh, as many people as...as we can get. And this is, last year and this year, unusual circumstances. Wouldn't do any harm to put it off another year so that more people in town, rather than 150 people weighing in on this particular thing, which is very important. And that's why I was looking at a non-binding referendum on the ballot to see what they were...what their feelings were. And, uh, it, uh...I'd rather see...we could do 100 people at the town meeting. So 100 people are going to make a...make the decision. So it could be, uh...it could be stacked in either way. The people that...that don't want it could flock to it, or the people that really want it could flock to it. But I...I think we would be best to get as many as we can to make that decision, and I just don't think that this year is the...the year to do that. And, uh, if you're looking...if you look at the...that was a statement number one. If you look at the proposed, uh, budget, 105,000. Just, uh, short time ago, couple days ago, the town of Bloxford posted a job for a town administrator. Less responsibilities than what we're looking for in the town of Groveland, but for more money than 105,000. So, uh...
Can I comment to that?
Uh, I...soon as I'm done. So, uh, it...if...if we put this out at 105,000, we should be limited to that. If we can't get anybody at 105,000, we shouldn't...we would...I think we would have to go back to the town meeting to, uh, raise the price. And, uh, so that...that troubles me. I think you're lowballing the figure, I don't know where it come up with, but I think that's a lowball figure, 105,000. I don't believe with the...when I read the job description, the duties and responsibilities, I personally don't think you're going to find anybody at 105,000. And, uh, second of all, you can't tell me that the committee was not stacked. I had asked, when you formed the committee, if you were going to put anybody on the committee that was against it. I want to hear...I would want to hear what people didn't think...didn't like about it, right? So, but the thing was that, no, you're not going to put anybody on it that's not against it. Everybody that's on it is for it. That's not the proper way to do a committee. Uh, and you know that's not the truth. You know that's not the way to do it, Joe. You...you got everybody on the committee that was in favor of it. And, uh, to me, if...if it goes to town meeting this year, uh, I...I think it's...
I don't know that you turned anybody away from that committee, but that's something else. So your argument about, uh, 100 people making the...the decision for the town, that happens at any town meeting. I could go get 51 of my friends and pass anything any year, because I have a majority. So that argument is...just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, well...
The...the...the price of the town administrator, that actually is low. I think that should probably be 120, 125,000. But your arguments are full of holes, Ed, because the...the...the idea that he stacked the committee to go forward with an approval of a town administrator is completely wrong. There was the other people on that committee who were not on board with that at first, that probably argued against it, but the committee went forward with it, because you know what? It's best for the town. Ruth, you're up.
Well, if you...
You're not up. Ruth's up.
I'm just saying that the committee put 120,000 into the discussion about it. 105,000 is what the Finance Director budgeted for it. The committee, this paper here that says GSE, this is the Groveland Study, the Government Study Committee, we recommended 120, because I agree with you, 105,000, I think, is low for that role and for the comps. I saw that Bloxford put out 117 to 155. Other ones are in more the 120 range, so that's what we recommended. So I agree with you.
What...uh, I'm sorry, what was the range on Bloxford again?
117 to 155.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a complete presentation in a few minutes anyways, to help you with that.
Go ahead.
If I could respond very quickly, and again, respectfully, very respectfully. The decision to, um, to...with, you know, not do this this year does not rest without either me or my...or my committee. It rests with you, and on March 15th, you voted not to wait, but to move forward.
Correct.
Secondly, if we do talk about town meeting, only 100 people, what really keeps me up at night and weighed very heavily on our committee is that the current arrangement, which is working, which was implemented through our former Finance Director of an expanded role, was put together only by four people that voted for it on the Board of Selectmen, maybe five. And we felt as a committee that a town administrator of any form, even if those duties are given to a Finance Director, should not be held together by gum, meaning just a vote of the Board of Selectmen. That's why we want to move forward with having the people decide.
Correct.
Okay, so...and...and, you know, so that's it. So again, very respectfully, I think you bring up some really legitimate concerns. Uh, the last thing I'll say is that I was very clear that if you wanted me to pursue this project, I would only consider working on a committee to study the problem on how to do it, not to study whether we should or not do it.
That's our decision to make.
Because we went through that with the five-member board, and we spent three months arguing whether we should do it or not, and then we... in 90 days, we put together how to do it. I would only participate and volunteer my time if we were on a committee where it was a foregone conclusion. You want to know how to do it, we're going to come back in 90 days and show you how to do it, and we delivered on that, so...
Correct.
Respectfully. Thank you. That's it.
Next up?
All right, okay, you want to open up with the finance, or do you want me to?
You can.
Okay. All right, so, take a look at this form of...and of course, I...I made a copy, um, for you and also to be into the record, go into the record. Also, there's us...there's other handouts, I won't go over these, but these are good backup support, um, i...items for you to consider. Uh, and it has information about town administrators and who's paying what, and so forth and so on. We also have some information about the treasurer, collections clerk, so... So here's the deal. When we look at...we look at the town of Groveland, there's a very important part of our govern... that our committee fell in love with this idea of calling it the finance leadership, or the financial leadership of the...of the town, separate from the Finance Committee. So who are the people that are involved? Now, there's a different ways of cutting this up, and Kevin was instrumental in giving us some guidance, but Kevin also uncovered something that Ed knows about and that I know about, and also a town administrator locally knows about. The market is really tight. It's really, really tight. There's a lot of 55 to 65-year-olds in town administrative positions or finance positions that are on the doorstep of retiring. The market is very, very limited. It's therefore, we feel as a committee, that a bidding up is almost inevitable. No question about it. So if you take a look at the green column, and then to the right of that, look at the currently proposed column, you'll see the differences that we are proposing versus the currently proposed budget. So for example, the town administrator, we're proposing 120,000, whereas the current proposal is proposing 105,000. Very simple. We are proposing that this financial team is made up of a town administrator, we cancel the Finance Director, we have a treasurer slash collector for 70,000 versus 75 on the right side, which is the proposed budget. We also have an assistant treasurer collector for 35,000, which on the right side, we have 43042. And we have a town accountant, 67,000 versus 88950. And then an administrative coordinator, 18772 versus 24. So that comes out to 311,000 versus 336, therefore 18% more to finance that team made up of town administrator, treasurer collector, assistant treasurer collector, treasurer...I'm sorry, accountant and administrative coordinator, a team of five. That...there's your financial team. It comes in at 18.31% more, the increase from FY '22 over FY '21. But here's when it gets interesting. The total department budget, those five people will cost this town, according to our column, 1.51% more. And we feel, on a $20 million budget, I think we did okay.
1.51% of our total operating budget.
Operating budget.
So...so I'm suggesting that the financial leadership of the town is worth 1.5% of our total town budget. I think that is a...
It can be...it can be captured within 2%, too.
Got it. Okay.
Now, can we find the right people? As Kevin has been warning us for months, it's a tight market out there. If one of my children said, "What can I do with, uh, with graduate school?", I would say, "Go get a PA in administration, in public administration, you'll have the pick of the litter for the next 15 years."
So I have a...I have a master's in public administration, maybe I'll apply for that job.
There you go.
I'll be here 24/7.
You can't apply for this job, though.
Kevin, you had a question?
Yeah, there's just a couple to try to help here, um, per what Joe said. The 105 figure that I put in here was before the committee published its results, so I don't have any strenuous disagreement with them in terms of the number. I would tell you, I do recruiting, I just finished a recruitment earlier this year for the town of Acushnet. And if you look at the salary survey, just a question, Joe, what's the source of this salary survey? Whose is this?
I, um...I had this hanging around for a while. I believe it's the Mass Municipal Association. I remember pulling it before we even had a committee pulled together.
Okay. I just wanted to know whose it is, so we can verify the authenticity of it.
Yeah. I have a spreadsheet that I can send.
I can verify it. This was document was in our Selectmen pile when we were still talking about this.
Yeah, this is old information.
And then we turned over all of the materials we had collected to this committee when it was appointed. So this is not just random numbers, this is a poll from the...
Um, so, here's what the difference between 120, 105 really means in the marketplace right now. 105 is going to get you somebody with three to five years' experience, may have their master's degree in public administration, may not. 120 is probably going to get somebody with five to 10 years' experience, and again, may or may not have their MPA. MPA is pretty much a calling card now. Most town managers have it. However, here's the reality in the marketplace right now. There's a lot of the old, uh, old buffalo like me, the baby boomers, and there's been an outwave of us for the last five years, and it's still going on. So a lot of the experienced people are leaving, and in...and that means all the intermediate people that are in that 10 to 15-year range are moving up. Unfortunately, there's a real lack of people on the bottom end. Ordinarily, the grad schools, Northeast and Suffolk, BC, um, would all be kicking out 30 to 40 MPA candidates a year, looking for jobs. And there's, for some reason, not a lot of interest in local government right now on the part of those MPA candidates. So if you follow town administrator appointments across the state, you're seeing a lot where it used to be traditionally, MPA candidates trained specifically to be town administrators. Now you're seeing, uh, former selectmen, former mayors, mayor's assistants, state reps. A lot of state reps getting hired. And unfortunately, a lot of those people aren't trained and experienced, and a lot of them are getting fired very quickly, and I...I don't want to do that publicly, but if any of you wonder, give me a ring, and I'll give you five or six examples that have happened in the last few months. What's the message here? I think if you set the salary at 120, you're going to get a more experienced person. If you set it at 105, you're going to get a less experienced person. But you will get candidates for both numbers, I promise you that. It's just really a matter of how, you know, what level of experience are you looking for? The reality is, for a small community like Groveland, you are not likely to hire somebody and have them think of it as this is their career. They're, you know, they're gonna...they're gonna do what most TA's do in small communities. They're going to get their three to five years, and then they're going to look for more responsibility, more pay, and they're going to move on. So, whether it's 105 or 120, you're going to get somebody who's not really well-experienced, but they're...but they're going to do a good job for you. Treasurer collector, committee said 70, I put in 75. Right now, if you look at the advertisements in the Beacon, and there's been a load of them, Georgetown, a whole bunch of towns around here, 70,000 is not going to get you a certified treasurer, guaranteed. 75 may not get you a certified treasurer, because a lot of them are now going at around 80. That's kind of the market value right now. Certified means certified by the Mass Treasurer Collectors Association, i.e., at least five years' experience, three years of the...of the school, and passed the certification course. Right now, market value for that is about 80. So 75 might work. It's kind of close. 70 will not work. Assistant treasurer collector, 43, that's the town's current rate. That...that's...that's the current rate that you have, so, um, I wouldn't reduce it to 35, because you'd be actually cutting the pay of the position that already exists. You have a person in it right now, making that. So assuming that person will slide into the position come July 1, into the assistant position, if you reduce it, you're going to ask the person to take a pay cut. I don't think that's going to go over well, to say the least.
Can I...can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is the current...again, not speaking of any personnel, but conceptually here, can the person who would hold an assistant treasurer collector be bumped up to treasurer collector, and then we fill in the new open position?
Yeah, right now, the person who is the assistant is the former clerk, who is performing the work of the assistant, and presumably, if they continue to make good progress from now to July, would... and assuming is a treasurer, a more senior person, then this person will be ready to be the assistant, would be very well-trained and, um, would be well worth the 43. Now that, as you can see, that's less than the position's currently budgeted for, but, you know, a beginner rate versus a more experienced rate, if you will.
No, I'm saying, is the person in the 43 can be moved up to the treasurer collector?
No, the person making 43
Absolutely not.
is the person that was making 22 a few months ago.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
That person would not be trained to be the treasurer collector, no.
Okay.
Because they just moved from the clerk to the assistant position. And we're...we've been training that. That person by July 1 will have about eight months of training, which is, you know, a good amount of training to slide into the position. And it's a very good person, and you can avoid recruiting and all that, so that certainly would be my recommendation to the board. The accountant is a two-component thing here. The 88 in the 67 isn't a fair comparison, because right now, it's budgeted at 65. You take 2% and you end up with that 67 number. However, town accountant has requested a salary increase consistent with the market survey, which we did together for this region. Town accountants are now...that is an average number for this region of actual town accountants. I would caution the board in the extreme. Do not, right underline, lose your town accountant. In the next few weeks, I'll...the audit will be out. I'll be putting some things before you. There's some serious deficiencies financially with the town right now, and I'll be getting in it. I've been giving you some snippets of it. You're going to get the full picture very soon. You cannot lose your town accountant. So my suggestion is, much like you did with your building inspector, 67 is way below market right now, way below market. And, um, a person...your town accountant has got lots of experience and is very good, and my strong suggestion is, um, pay the freight. This is an average, this isn't the high end, this is an average. In fact, if everything on this piece of paper, that's the one I would circle and say, if you change anything else in the paper, don't change that one. And in the administrative coordinator, 24/7, that's the current rate times 25 hours. The 18772 is at 19 hours. So the only difference there is the number of hours, not the pay grade. So that gives you some information about the two columns combined and my comment.
Great, thank you. Ruth, did you have anything to add?
No, just that, um, I did talk to a lot of people, and I got a lot of feedback regarding, um, the rates that we think that we can find help. I understand, um, you know, where Kevin's coming from, and I appreciate his input. But, um, this was based on some other salary surveys and conversations that I've had with different people who have had and know the job and the metrics in the local areas. I know that all the jobs are upward price pressures. I know that all the jobs are upward price pressures, but, you know, I feel like, if you look back at the past few budgets, at the budgeted fiscal year 2020, 2021 are right, both right here, 254 and 262 for this same group, I feel like that worked at that funding level. I feel like the town was in a good position. I feel like we were doing a good job. I feel like we were increasing our stabilizations. I feel like we were bringing the town to a good place. I had great confidence with the people working in our town hall. As a member of the finance board for five years, I really felt like we were in a good place. And now, we're adding $50,000 to that budget, and I feel like that should be at least a starting point for a conversation to move forward. Thank you.
Joe, anything else?
Let me do a little bit of math. Hold on. There is one more thing. Before you put the issue about the town administrator on the, on the warrant, again, I can't urge you enough, and this is an expression of myself and the committee, that we have an opportunity to interface, have a discussion with the town council, and also that the town council really approves what we've suggested. Because we do not want to be the committee that, you know, provided technical and legal advice, because we're not, we're not in that capacity. We don't have those qualifications. So, my recommendation is that the town council has an opportunity to dialogue with John Christopher on our committee, to kind of go over the document, the recommendations that we made, to make sure that we're technically in compliance with everything that we need to be in compliance with, on three matters. One, implementing the town administrator through 41(c), 23(a), which is what you voted on. And two, to do it by the bylaw, even though we have to modify it. And three, that we can kick out the finance bylaw to accommodate our bylaw to town, to implement the town administrator a little bit later on. It's a lot of technical, a lot of legal, and we got some really good advice from Kevin. We got some good advice from, from several public officials here in town and also out of town. But we can't be the certifying unit here that says, "Okay, this is all legal, and it's not going to blow up." The only thing I say is, "Don't bet against the committee." I think we got it right.
How much interaction do you think you need to have with the town lawyers? I'm just looking at a cost value of it, that's why.
Well, if there's nothing wrong, less than an hour. If there's a problem, it could be more than that. I think we got it right.
Yeah, I think you did, too.
I think we got it right.
I think that running that by town council for an hour or even a couple hours at their rates is worthwhile, to double-check your work and to make sure everything is, is, you know, up and up. So, if you want me to set it up, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I don't want to intervene, but that would be a responsibility. I would wish for you to do it and to set it up, an opportunity, and I, you know, provide John Christopher's contact information and just go from there, completely outside of our committee. It's just an extra, it's just a really important step that I feel you should take, so.
I think it's an important check, you know?
Say it again, please.
I think it's an important check.
Yeah, absolutely. This way here, it alleviates you. I mean, like I said, we've got great advice from Kevin. We think we got, we got great advice from our committee members. You know, even internally, we had some talent. We got great advice from Ruth. We got great advice from outside our town and inside of our town. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet against us, because we got good advice.
No, neither would I, but you'd like a sounding board.
But get the town council and say, "These guys have it right." Check before you put it on town meeting.
You'd just like them to put their blessing on.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a suggestion to keep the bill...
Yeah, that'll be helpful.
If John could take those three questions, or you, Joe, just put them in an email to Mike, with CC to me. One of us, Mike, can get it to town council. And so, when he has the conversation, presumably a Zoom meeting with John, he will have already looked this up and been prepared to give him answers, which would be much more efficient than listening to the question, then going to do the research and coming back with the answers. And these are all, if I understood the questions correctly, these are three very straightforward questions that town council might even be tempted to answer right off the top of his head.
Yeah, so, Joe, I'll put, I was just gonna send an email right this second to get it done, but let's, if you could do that.
Okay.
Send that to Kevin and I.
Yep.
We'll bounce that off of, is it gonna be Brian over there at KP Law?
Probably be Brian Mazur, yeah.
We'll bounce it off of Brian.
Although, Brian's, Brian's the personnel guy.
Yeah.
So, he may defer to another member of the staff at KP Law who's more of a, and honestly, I don't know who their charter person is, so he may defer, I don't know.
Okay.
We do have John Christopher on. He's participating in our presentation today, but remotely, I don't know if John has any comments or perspective.
John, you got any comments? You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Mute.
Okay.
I have no comments.
That's easy, okay.
Happy to work with anyone from town council's office.
Right. Yeah, we'll try to get that, Joe. So, as soon as you can send it to us, we'll turn it around and get it over to them.
Yeah.
So, if it's later tonight or tomorrow morning, I'll do it right then, and try to get that at least rolling before the end of the week. I would like to get some kind of feedback before the end of the week, if possible.
Absolutely. The time is of the essence.
That's right, no, time like the present. So, anything else to add on this subject?
No, I'm all set. Ruth?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for the information. This is helpful.
Thanks, Kevin, appreciate your help.
Let's, you're gonna stick around for budget, right?
Yes, but I can...
Yeah, real quickly, I convene the meeting April 8 of our committee.
Yeah.
To wrap up from tonight. We need to prove some minutes, and then we're gonna look for your guidance as to what role you want us or me to play at town meeting.
Okay.
So, one of you should present it and promote it, and I'll play a role.
Sounds good.
Okay? Thank you again, thank you all.
Thank you.
I want to get to Deb, the Board of Health, so she can leave. And then we have Elm Park at 6:30.
That's fine.
So, we won't get to the budget till after that. So, I'm looking at maybe 6:45-ish?
That's fine. Do you want me to?
You can stay if you want.
Sit here, or do you want me to leave?
It's up to you, honey.
Sit here if there's space, that's fine.
Those guidelines about 10 people in a room aren't, you know, they've now moved them up quite a bit, so.
I was just thinking of sanity, if you wanted to leave and check yourself into sanity.
I do watch it from home.
Well, being home and being here are two different things. All right, so let's move over to the Board of Health budget discussion. Deb, did you have anything you wanted to open with?
Not really. This is one of the first times I've actually been in front of you for this, so, I mean, I talked to the finance board on it.
Yeah, I think...
Do you have any questions on it?
Well, I, I don't know, going back weeks, so. I think the questions I had, or that might have been written on some piece of paper from some weeks ago, was about the...
The health agent increase?
The health agent and the pay increase that was permitted for that role. Was it 9,000, 10,000?
It was 9,690.
About 9,000, 691.
It was a 36%, 37% increase.
That's why he's a money guy.
It's a big jump.
Well, it is, but we also didn't, we had an interim for over a year. We couldn't find anybody qualified to even apply, and the person that we, that we do have is well-qualified. She's the registered sanitarian. She has food certification. She's Title V instructor. I mean, she's really, really, really good, and it's somebody the town needs. And, and other towns where she's worked, she actually makes $50 an hour. So, at 40, we thought that was a good, we couldn't have gotten her for less, and...
How many hours is that?
She's got up to 17, and that, but she hasn't even worked 17 hours for us yet.
So, she, she has a bandwidth up to 17. What has she been averaging the last few weeks, do you know?
I don't even think it's maybe, maybe 10 hours a week, could be a little bit less, I'm not sure.
So, that 17 is the absolute max for that?
It is, unless there becomes COVID, which she has been doing a lot with the, with the school board. Not the school board, but with Dr. Bartholomew and getting schools back. She's been on those meetings. So, those are technically COVID meetings, but we do have money to cover if we had to for any X, if we had excess.
Does anybody have any questions for Deb? Jason?
No, I mean, I think it was pretty clear in the statement that they attached that the increase was to be competitive, to get somebody qualified to do the job. And I think that's important.
Captain?
I, I think the protection of our town on the area of health, that we've all learned the value of that this year, and we've learned the pitfalls of underfunding it as well. So, I think that we made a prudent decision, and a qualified person is working for us, and they're not churning up the hours or anything. They seem to be doing just what's necessary. So, I think it's a good decision.
And I was, something that you were saying, that I think people are getting older, and we're not getting people who want to come and work in public health, and it's, you know, and it's kind of like an issue. And also, it's, it's non-benefited, too. There's no...
Because it's under 20 hours.
Yeah, so...
Phil, anything?
Not in that position, but in the overall, your expense line also jumped 36%. Do you know why? Year over year. I'm looking at almost $1,000 increase in your expenses. Is, what's, do you know what's driving that?
Actually, no, I have no idea what the, it's, maybe there's an error, because it says the increase is only $73.20.
I don't see that number.
So...
I see 2021 at 2750, and 2022 at 3733.
I see only a 2% increase, so there must be an error in the calculation.
An error in my spreadsheet, which is a problem.
The expenses, I see...
It, well, it says here, well, at least I have, fiscal year 21, $3,660, and then it says 3,733, but I think that's not supposed to be that.
It looks to me like an increase of $73.20.
Right. So, the requested is wrong. The fiscal year requested is wrong.
What was wrong? The requested amount was wrong?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Is that a key puncher?
It must be.
Okay. I'm just looking for it.
So, there's not that much of an increase?
No, it's only an increase of $73.20.
All right.
The number should be...
The fiscal year 21 was $3,660.
Okay, so 21 is wrong. It should be what?
$3,660.
That was for fiscal year 21.
Okay, so it's 73, it's a 2%.
Or that's what's in this detail sheet. What number, maybe the number I'm looking at is wrong. What number are we looking at?
I had 2750, but that's from the spreadsheet.
Our spreadsheet's right, what I have here.
Your budget book, Bill, has the correct...
Yeah, this is fine.
For what was budgeted for 21.
Yeah, I get that, but...
But this...
It's for 22.
I'm not sure what you're looking at.
I'm looking at the spreadsheet you sent me. That has 2750, budgeted 2021, but, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Huh?
I see what you say. It says fiscal year 21 approved.
I don't have what you're looking at.
2021, I got 2750. So, if that number's wrong, obviously, it's driving my number.
There we go, I found your budget.
So, that expenses at 22,750.
Which would have driven a 36% increase.
So, really, but we would need to verify that whether...
What's right, what's wrong.
Those, that column, budgeted FY '21 and actual FY '20, both come out of Vadar. That's a report that gets generated, so I can't tell you if there's a discrepancy between the budget book and Vadar, unless I have time to go talk to the town accountant and find out, but...
Well, FY '21, I have a hard copy on.
There's a $1,000 discrepancy, 37 versus 27.
Do you want to know what we voted?
Yeah, what we voted for expenses.
That's what the number's supposed to be, what you voted for expenses this year.
That's what we're trying to verify.
But, like, just a comment. I don't think, based on, and this is not based on a market survey, so preface it by saying that, but it works out to a $41 an hour rate for the, for the health agent. That is not an excessive rate for a health agent right now, that's for sure. So, I don't think, even though it's a substantial increase, I think it's a substantial increase that was probably merited in order to get a person. And as Deb has said, when we first put the ad out, we were getting, we weren't getting any response, and that was at the lower rate. So, I think it was necessary to get a qualified person to bring the rate up. Having said that, I think, and this is something I've discussed with the finance board, and I may be off by one or two here, but Groveland, I think, has 12 or 13 different hiring authorities. The board is a hiring authority for a lot of folks, but not the only hiring authority. Board of Health, Conservation, Water Sewer Commission, it's quite a list. I'm very concerned, because right now, there's very little, well, there's basically no coordination in wage setting. Each board, committee, and commission hires people on their own, sets their own wages. This is, this is an example of it. It's not incorrect, but the point of the fact is, there's a law in Massachusetts that passed in 2018 that requires everyone, governments included, to maintain what's called vertical and horizontal equity, meaning you must maintain fair pay for fair work on the basis of gender, race, religion, the whole nine yards. When you've got 12 or 13 or 14 different hiring authorities, all setting their own wages, you've got a recipe for disaster, for claims, basically. I think it's imperative, and this is a good example, and you got another one going on with the conservation agent, where you got a whole different proposal there with a whole new structure. We've got to get sooner rather than later a pay plan for the town, where you've got standardized pay, so that everybody is balanced according to each other. And this is another good example of why you've got to do it, because if you can't hire somebody for the wage you got right now, and you got to bring it up 37% to attract the candidate, and that's happening over and over and over, it tells you something is very functionally wrong with our pay system, and we need to address it. And I'll have a proposal for you, not tonight.
No, we don't have to.
But this is just another example of what you've seen over and over in this budget this year.
Okay, Bill, you all set with that now?
It's 2750.
It's 2750 on the warrant.
It's on 2750 on the warrant from last year.
And so, the number that was in this budget sheet is wrong. So, it's not a 2% increase. It's larger than that.
It's a 35% increase.
So, your fiscal '22 requested is probably based off of a 2% increase, thinking this was your denominator. So, really, what you request perhaps should be 2% on the actual last year, which was 2750.
Okay.
So, what number are we looking at now?
We're looking at the expenses for the Board of Health.
FY '22 requested column expenses.
Yeah, I'm not looking at the spreadsheet. What are the numbers?
I guess it should be...
The fiscal year 21 approved expenses was 2,750. The sheet says it's 3,660, 2750.
Yeah, so they requested in the last one for the prior year, 279, approved 279, approved 2750.
So, the budget that I just gave you over the weekend is accurate. The budget that was submitted by the department is not. I can't tell you why that is. All I can tell you is, I did this one. I didn't do that one, if that helps you.
Are you okay now with the numbers? No.
No. So, are you saying the 3733 is right, then that's a 37?
No, 22,750 is right. Exactly what you said is on my spreadsheet, 2750, that's the correct number.
2750, I'm showing at 2021.
Yes.
I'm showing 2022 at 3733. Is that correct?
The request, you mean? The request, you mean?
The request, a 36% increase. Is that correct?
The FY22 request is 3,733 and 20 cents.
Right.
But it shouldn't be, because we're looking only for a 2% increase, so something is...
It was based on the wrong denominator.
Right.
Yeah, well, I, I didn't submit the budget, so I can't tell you. I don't...
So we're just trying to fix it. So it really, so we should be adding 2% on to 2,750. And then we have to re-subtotal everything all the way down.
Right.
So you're looking at 2805 as the budget increase?
2705 times 1.02.
So the percent increase is off by a little bit. That's, that's the takeaway.
It'll still be 2%.
So that's going to be plus...
But it's, the amount increase will be different.
Frank Ruth, 2,805?
Times 1.02. So it's going to be 2805.
All right.
1,800.
$500 increase.
I can use a calculator.
Well, that's why I wanted, I like it on the spreadsheet. I can do this stuff in real time.
All right, so 2805, you put that in your spreadsheet?
It's in my spreadsheet.
Everybody good?
2805.
Now that, and we all understand the number.
Great, that's a lot of fun.
Well, I'm going to start making a list of things to follow up though, probably, right? To make sure that they were adjusted.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Deb and Board of Health? Ed?
Deb, um, Board of Health agent, uh, on, on the average fiscal year, how much do they bring in?
You mean as far as fees?
Fees.
I, I don't know. I never see what the fees are. They're, do you have a thing, Kevin?
I do.
Give me a minute. Go on to something else. I'll find it for you.
No, that's all I...
Yeah, I don't know.
Take your time.
What do you mean to put you on the spot?
I'll see if I... What's that?
On the second page, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's really nothing on the first page.
First page wasn't missing.
At the end of the day, I'm, I'm not looking to be picky, and I'm just looking to be right, you know?
That's fine. I didn't, I didn't even look at it and realize that there was a difference.
Well, unfortunately...
All I do all day is staring at thinking numbers, so, you know.
I've been looking at these numbers for ages, and I just didn't see that one. Uh, because it depends on what you, I was looking at this sheet, and then, yep.
Unfortunately, I can't...
And I don't have that sheet.
I can't break it out by department. It's 121,092 for all licenses and permits, which would include CV licenses, milk, food handlers, and all that. So I can't give you the breakout.
Ed's question.
That includes...
Yeah, I mean, I can, when we get all the receipts posted, which is, we're trying to get caught up.
It's certainly more than what the salary is, obviously.
That, that includes subject in everything?
Yeah, remember, departmental receipts haven't, up until a few weeks ago, had not been posted all the way back to September of last year. So the, uh, interim treasurer is now, one of the things she's doing is she's posting those and bringing them forward. That's a priority because I need to look at that in order to verify my revenue projections on the department level. Um, so hopefully within the next week or two, we'll have that. But that's, that is literally thousands of deposits that have to all get posted one at a time. It's a massive amount of work. I, I don't know why it wasn't posted, but we're catching up slowly. So as soon as I can get those, I know Kathy's been interested in it, I'm going to get that published in a memo to the board so that you'll, and to the FIN board as well, so that you'll have what the actual receipts for this year are for all categories.
Okay. Is that it, Ed?
I'm just going off the state, uh, the DOR website, which doesn't break it down to department.
So do we have to vote on her budget in order to put it into our next discussion?
You do. Well, you don't have to vote the individual budget, no, because you haven't voted any other individual budgets.
Okay.
Making a correction.
Yep. Well, I'm glad we brought you in, so we can make that correct. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to get Mike? $900.
Believe me, Frank, I was just, every penny. Frank Ruth, midnight last night, too, and I just, I got so blurry-eyed, I couldn't do it anymore.
I'm already blurry-eyed.
That's it, we live, we live through numbers.
I don't know how you do it. Definitely not for me.
Oh, we have Greg Stark tonight, too. Hello, sir.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Thanks.
All right, Mike?
Hi. How are you?
I'm all right. How about you? I see this fancy document you put together for us.
Oh.
Very nice.
Yeah, we don't have one.
I'm going to say...
I got one right here. You want one?
No, it's a big, thick one.
I know.
Did you?
What's that? No, I have it right here.
All right. Um, so I'm going to say, uh, go ahead, but I'm also going to say we've got 15 minutes. All right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Why don't I give you a quick, short introduction?
Sure.
Okay, so you know I'm Greg Stark, um, a longstanding member of the Groveland Elm Square Committee. I'm here to give you a quick background of the committee's activities. In 2019, we concluded our business property owner surveys to compile the thoughts of Elm Square. And once again, parking was identified as one of the predominant issues. And 2020, the town of Groveland, with great appreciation to Rebecca, worked in conjunction with the Department of Housing and Community Development, um, and consulting with the firm Stantec to develop a parking study focused on Elm Square. The Elm Square Parking Study is a help guide for the town's parking strategy and management and provide a baseline understanding of the parking inventory and demand of, uh, in the heart of Elm Square. As a part of this study, uh, the project team engaged in a public thorough, um, series of individual stakeholder sessions to better understand the parking issues and concerns and opportunities of Elm Square. After Stantec, uh, conducted their individual interviews and compiled the data, they created Elm Square Parking Plan Report, the one that you were looking at. Um, recent meetings of this year kind of concluded with, uh, a February 18 Zoom meeting with State Senator Bruce Tar and State Representative Lenny Mira and other group members, uh, to discuss the future of Groveland Square. Um, the, that report was also shared with the state officials. Um, so Mike will probably give you a little bit more update on, um, some of the current status.
So we, um, worked with the committee and Stantec to come up with some solid, uh, strategies that would improve Elm Square, help businesses to grow and come to Groveland, and also to benefit the residents of the town in one way or another. So these five strategies, I'm hoping that, um, the board will help us with and support. And Rebecca's going to be talking a little bit more about that in the end, but I just wanted to briefly tell you about the strategies and maybe if you had any questions about them. But, so the first one is to create a shared parking program and encourage shared parking in Elm Square. So, uh, you know, as you probably know, in the square, there's a lot of, uh, larger businesses that have their own parking facilities, and they're restricted to their own customers or their own employees. So by setting up a shared parking program, um, it, as a formal method, not just, uh, informal method, we think that we can create new parking for businesses, especially at times of day when other businesses don't need it. And the town can promote this practice by using our study results that we received from Stantec and demonstrate the opportunity to some of these key landowners and businesses. And, uh, so the town, if the town wants to adopt this, we set up a, a, a set of guarantees and work with the individual owners, uh, to keep their parking agreements in place, set up templates that can be used in the future with developers and landowners. The next one is to designate off-street parking with signage. So, you know, again, as I'm sure you're aware, is from a visitor's perspective, often is unclear where the public can park in Elm Square. There's not a lot of signage. People aren't sure if they can park in areas or they can't. So installing a consistent and easily recognizable signage system would help the square visitors locate parking and provide an opportunity to implement, uh, wayfinding to Curry Park and Pines and Town Hall. Uh, the third strategy is to add on-street parking on key Elm Square corridors. So, um, again, as we all know, driving through the square, along Route 113, heading towards Newbury Port, you know, there are a number of on-street spots that aren't really marked very well. And we're not, again, we're not even sure if they're parking spaces or not. And similarly, on, um, on Route 97, heading out towards Georgetown, there are a number of spots that were eliminated by paving, I mean, excuse me, by lining the street. So when, nobody's quite sure if these are, are spaces or not. So, uh, it's possible that we could, if looked at it closely, that we could, uh, create some new parking right on the street in some of the key Elm Square corridors. And the fourth is to create a more walkable Elm Square. So currently Elm Square doesn't feel very comfortable if you're walking around it or walking through it. Um, it's not very accommodating to walkers. It's become mostly a drive-through location, and people are usually in a hurry to move on. So unless you press that walk light to cross, and even then, often you're taking your life in your hands. So, uh, we want to allow for, for, um, for a better walkable and more inviting downtown. This will help, again, not just residents of Groveland, but businesses that might consider moving to Groveland or coming to Groveland when they see that people are able to actually find them and enter their business. The fifth is, the fifth strategy is to reconfigure, um, some of the existing parking lots and open spaces. So this, again, goes back to some of the private lo, lo, landowners and private lots, to, uh, work with them to reconfigure, redesign some of their parking areas. Um, there's, uh, you know, we've had some discussion with, uh, some owners. We, we have, uh, currently have four business owners or landowners on the committee. So they've given us plenty of input about their need for parking and also the willingness to share their parking or their willingness to redesign their parking. So we've had, uh, some discussion with some of the owners, and they are, uh, potentially looking at being able to redesign their private parking space to make more spaces and with proper signage, offer some of that parking in shared parking agreements. So the opportunity is, is definitely there. So as I mentioned, um, you know, what we want, what we would heartily recommend is that the, uh, board consider these strategies and, um, look at, uh, support for them. So I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca now, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about the support we need.
Thank you, Mike. Can you all hear me?
Again.
So I just want to say that I've had the pleasure of working with the committee since I started here in Groveland. And as discussed, we've been working on the MDI grants to analyze existing conditions and establish a base for progress. The committee has also been working to analyze wayfinding, signage, and beautification efforts, as Mike just explained. And there has been some discussion for small community events such as a farmer's market and the like, in order to enhance foot traffic in the area. We've also been working on a website specifically for businesses to showcase vacancies and promote the benefits of being in Groveland. There is much that still needs to be done, and so these efforts are really crucial for the further development and economic development of our town center and beyond. So I would like to formally support reinstating this committee and updating the charge to focus on revitalization of the town center and to continue to explore ways to bring resources into the center so that our businesses can thrive.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, just checking. Anything else, Mike?
No, um...
No?
Well...
You meant yes?
Yes. So...
Just checking.
Um, you know, I, what I would, what I'd love to see is that the board takes a vote to, um, that we, uh, support the, that you support the Economic Development Planning and Conservation Commission, continuing this effort with either an Elm Square Committee or a Business Advisory Group that covers, uh, these type of things, both in Elm Square and throughout Groveland, to support local businesses. And then to support, uh, that committee and that department implementing some of these strategies that I outlined.
Okay.
Would you consider a vote on it?
I would consider anything. Um, that seems like an, an easy ask to me, um, because it doesn't cost the town anything, right? And especially the way you and Rebecca go after grants and everything else, um, to help fund whatever changes you're looking to make place in. I, I have a hard time seeing adding more parking spots to downtown because it's very tight as it is. But if you guys want, think that that can be done, and you can have more off-street parking, uh, to support the businesses down there, then of course I would support that.
I think by the selectmen, uh, voting to at least support these efforts, you know, other town departments such as highway, we can say, you know, the selectmen agree with this strategy. We want to try to go down this path to improve parking, to improve, you know, things in the square. It would be helpful.
Let me ask you this, though. With the changes that might come out of this, how much effort is that going to take to revitalize what's already been done over the last 15 years downtown? I ask because it seems like every 15 or 20 years, that street gets dug up to do something else. And I, I want to avoid doing that. Like, there was the 97 project in the 80s, and then in the 90s, there was the Elm, Elm Tree Project where the basketball court was removed, the, uh, veterans of foreign wars, um, statues were, or, uh, memorials were put up at the top, and then the trees were lined down, down the center of Elm Park, right? And then there was, not too long ago, the bridge project, which tore up closer to the river, right? So that's three projects in the last 30 years. This isn't going to be anything close to that, right? There's not going to be a lot of traffic changes, uh, diversions, constructions, ripping up any roads. You're looking to just manage what's there better? Is that an accurate assessment?
Yes. I would say, you know, a lot of it is, is simple solutions like signage, line painting, lane realignments, that type of thing that don't require construction.
Construction that happened in 2004 for the, for the park was all done in, with Mass Highway.
Mm-hmm.
We, we, all the plans were all given to them before the, before the bridge was actually built. And it was all done cohesively with the, with the project or the other. They had to do the park first. So it wasn't like, it was, you know, they were unaware of what was going to happen. It was all part of a plan.
No, it wasn't that they were unaware. It's just, it seemed like it would have been more efficient to do it all at the same time, right?
Yeah.
But of course, there's the budget, there's the construction equipment and the ability to do that. And then, of course, the, um, impact to the, the downtown area would be And then, of course, the impact to the downtown area would be much longer.
Town Park was a historic rehabilitation project that got its own grant money from the state, so it had to be done as a separate project.
Anybody have any questions for Mike or Craig? Ed?
Yes. Did, in your, your workup, was there anything about redoing that sidewalk with the utility poles in the middle of the sidewalk and it's not handicap accessible? From Jerry's Variety up to, almost up to School Street.
It was mentioned, wasn't it? Wasn't that mentioned?
Not sure.
You know what I'm talking about? In front of those businesses along there?
Oh, definitely.
It, very difficult for somebody in a wheelchair to maneuver up, up that sidewalk. It doesn't meet the requirements. It, I like this plan because maybe, maybe we can get somebody to move into the Groveland Square, the Groveland Square Restaurant is. That'd be ideal. It, right there in the center of town, it was, it was a fantastic business before, when the people were there. Well, you know, that's your building.
I know, I know. Well, the, the problem is, is nobody wants to invest into a business if there's no parking.
Well, that's true. Did you consider, I call it the backside of Elm Park, where, the side where John Vowles is. Did you consider parking on one side of the road there and maybe making that one-way?
Yes, that was one of the recommendations of potential on-street parking that isn't really designated, you know? Nobody really knows if it's a one-way or not. They don't know if you can park on one side or both sides. So again, signage would certainly help.
Certainly, certainly narrow enough that you, if it was someone parked on the side of the road, it's difficult to run two-way traffic. But I, I don't think you're going to get approval for parking on, on Route 113. That's a state road. I don't think they're going to approve that. That's got to go through Mass Highway.
I believe all their parking recommendations came through, through the state, wasn't it? Yeah, results.
Yeah, that would have come through the Senate, your rep in your senator's office.
Right.
Just two more. Was there any, did you, did you look into the possibility of bringing the MVRTA bus across the bridge into Groveland Square? Right now, it stops there by Market Basket, and I know we had, it had been asked before, and it was, it was a prohibitive cost to run it down to, out behind the housing project out behind the fire station. But the cost was just ridiculous. But if it's over there at Market Basket, just, I don't know where you turn it around if they come across the bridge, but that'd be kind of nice to do that. And, which brings to mind, when they were designing that bridge, and I was working in Haverhill at the time, and I argued, I said that the sidewalk is on the wrong side of that bridge. When you walk from Groveland into Haverhill and you come into Riverside Avenue, there's no crosswalk for the people to walk. They have to go down all the way to the light. It's not convenient. If the sidewalk should have been put on the other side of the, the bridge. Right now, you see people, you know, every morning, they're walking down the opposite side of the bridge. It's more convenient.
We actually tried to get them to put sidewalks on both sides of the bridge.
I'm sorry, what was it again?
We tried to get them to put sidewalks on both sides of the bridge, but it's a little cost prohibitive for them to do that.
And I don't remember the rationale, because I had argued the point at the time, that it should have been on the other side of the bridge. But I don't remember, that's been several years.
I remember.
I don't remember why they put it there.
All right, so we're at about 20 minutes now. So what do you need from us? You need us to vote on approving your proposed...
But if we just endorse the following five strategies for improving Elm Square parking as detailed in the STAND Act, we're prepared and presented under the DHCD grant in January 2021.
But can you include the charge to continue the Elm Square? Is that what Rebecca wanted, right?
And charge the committee to continue to work on these strategies.
Excellent.
So moved.
Second.
Great, Jason seconded. Any other questions? Phil?
Real quick. So I appreciate all the work you guys done. It's incredible. So I'm looking at this one picture here, it'd be two, add on side-street parking Elm Square. And it's great that all you business owners are working in conjunction with each other. I think it's a win-win for all of you. But have we talked to the actual residents on that side? To ask them what their opinion would be on, you know, putting public parking in front of their homes? And, you know, I just want to know if you've approached any of them and got their thoughts on if they'd be happy or upset with that. We just, you know, we want everybody to win with this situation, right? We don't want to make anybody angry in the process. You know, unintended consequences, so to speak, right?
It was public, the meetings that we, that they put out to everybody. It was put out on the, the state, on the town website. So it was put out to everybody when we got the original meetings for it. It is a public road, so I guess...
Jason, you have some info?
There's a possibility of using it for...
I believe that's all public parking now, just not sign.
Just not sign.
I've parked there before.
The sign is in Market?
Right.
The sign is in Market, and also it was talked about redoing that sidewalk to make it more accessible and walkable.
I do see cars parked on that side.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've parked there.
I believe most of them are residents.
Yeah.
You know, and that sidewalk is a disgrace. You're right, the whole, the whole, the whole, from God in the street all the way down needs to be replaced. It's not fit for man or beast.
Well, the problem with that is the telephone poles go right through the middle of the sidewalk there. So that's another, another issue, but...
Yeah.
It'll be a...
Yep, that's it.
Jason, you have anything else?
That's it, I'm all set.
All right, you have a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Unanimate. Look at that, Mike, we're almost on time. I'll take that.
Thank you.
Good luck and great work.
All right, so that's that. All right, let's, can we go to Comcast agreement? I think we got to put that out of the way.
Do we have it?
Yeah.
Well...
That was part of a meeting.
So it's part of the packet, and basically KP Law has been talking to Comcast and has sent us a couple of options that we need to vote on.
Oh, okay, I think I have.
So the current status of our negotiations with Comcast are, one, we have asked for 5% annual, up from 3.75, and a capital grant of $180,000 up from $80,000, I'm sorry, $180,000 up from $100,000. Two, Comcast will offer us no more than 5% and $150,000 unless we give them something back to them, either an access channel or give up asking for HD access channel. Currently, we have two channels. So the negotiations are at an impasse. Play a waiting game, da-da-da-da, I've tried. So it seems to me, to KP Law, that there are a few options.
Three.
Three options. Capital in the amount of $150,000 plus two channels and an HD channel. Capital in the amount of $180,000 and two access channels but no HD channel. Capital in the amount of $180,000 and one channel with, which in two to three years would be converted over to an HD channel. So those are the three options.
Why do we need two channels?
I don't know, Brett, why would we need two channels?
I have no idea.
All right. Nobody knows.
We only do one thing.
I see there's two channels now. One is usually these meetings and specific to Groveland, and the other one is like, what's going on at that little Georgetown beach? Some people, that's what I see. I see the second channel really is not relative to Groveland, from what I've seen.
So you're saying that we could probably get away with one channel?
That's my observation. I mean, we might want to validate that, but I haven't seen, you know, one seems sufficient, especially when...
I didn't even know there was a, a channel that had the Georgetown beach on it.
I see it all the time.
Yeah, oh, great.
Or they'll have like, or sometimes they'll broadcast what's going on at the senior center and stuff like that.
But it's not Groveland stuff.
Maybe some, maybe it's community stuff versus the other channel is specific to Groveland.
What's the number for the other channel?
I forget, I've seen them.
Two and nine.
Ours is nine, what's the other one?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, that's it.
Didn't even know they had a 22.
Yeah.
But I've never seen these meetings on the second channel.
I thought that, I thought there was educational stuff from the schools that were on that one, on that channel.
Hi.
Maybe sometimes they have the, you know, the games and stuff like that.
Do you have a PEG access committee? Because one suggestion I would make to you is that if you do have a cable committee or PEG access, whatever you call it, that you bounce this off of them, because the other folks will do this every day and probably would give you pretty good input.
Yeah. Brett, is Chris around still?
I don't know, Mike, can you text him?
Yeah, you want to text him? That would help.
Do we have to vote this at this meeting?
No, we can...
He's still here, but do you want him to come in?
Yeah, if he's here, he can come in, that'd be great.
But if he's not here, you don't want him to...
He can just answer the question.
No, but I mean, we can...
Do you have to make this decision tonight, Mike?
No, I doubt it. I mean, this thing has been ongoing for years, so another two weeks isn't going to matter.
Well, I would suggest to the board that you throw this at your cable committee and get their reaction, because they would know, do you need the two stations or not, you know?
We don't have a committee. So the main thing is the 5% should support the money that we need to pay for people to record the meetings. That's, that's our main endeavor, right? And then the $180,000 is just aside for replacement of equipment.
Correct.
Okay. So we just don't know if we want one channel or two. I don't know.
Is he around? No?
I'm waiting.
All right, well, if he gets back to you, we'll jump back to this, but otherwise, we'll just bounce it off of Chris and see what he thinks.
Yep. Sounds like a plan.
By the way, Mr. Chitt, do you know how much this cost us?
The legal fees?
Yeah.
Kevin, do you happen to have the KP Law bill total?
I don't have the latest one with me, no.
You'd have to go through all the bills, though, and add up. I mean, because I don't know.
We've got one through the end of January, which I just signed off on to go into the warrant. I don't know, is it in tonight's warrant?
I didn't see it.
You didn't see it?
But I didn't, I went, I went through that quickly, so I kind of messed them up, Catherine, I'm sorry.
Might be in the warrant tonight.
If not, maybe next meeting you just give me a, an idea of what this cost us.
Oh, this negotiation?
Yeah.
Jeez, great minds must think alike, because I wrote that down already. Because here's what I was, I was, I'm kind of wondering what you're paying for this negotiation.
So am I.
And then secondarily, the legal budget, it's not in serious trouble, but it's close. And if the cable negotiations haven't been paid out of cable franchise fees, they should be. And that'll be a boost to the general, general fund part of the budget and probably pull it out of the red.
We are, we're not supposed to pay it out of the legal...
I'll definitely get back to the board with that.
Yeah, that was way back when, though.
Well, yeah, that's what Janice said, though. We pay it out of the cable fees.
I think Bill's question is more than just what might be on that bill, but what have you paid?
Right, that might be one invoice for a certain...
Yeah, you're looking like the last eight months or so.
Looking for year-to-date, and even last year, if it, yeah.
Associated with that, yeah.
I'll get that for you tomorrow.
I feel like Comcast kind of dragged it out. I remember the, the person that he needed to talk to wasn't around for a while, so I don't know.
Yeah, but we wouldn't get billed for that.
Right, so...
It's Mike.
It may not be much.
I wouldn't think we'd get billed.
Do you know why we would need to have two cable channels? Right, but we have options that we're looking at through Comcast negotiations. Two of the options have two cable channels, and one of the options has one cable channel.
But no HD?
No HD.
You would get HD eventually.
Two or three years.
Yeah. Do we need two channels or...
What's the difference?
So historically, you've been running two channels, because we have the equipment. Right, okay. Okay, that's all we need to know. All right, thank you.
Because he didn't want to be broadcasting on his phone.
So he said that we historically for the last 10 years have been running two channels. And we have the equipment that we purchased to run two channels. And we can do public access for community stuff on one channel and then government stuff on another channel, is what we've been doing. So it sounds to me like we want to keep two channels.
Okay.
Now, that narrows it down to A and B. Do we want HD? Or do we want no HD?
Well, one gives us 150 and no HD.
One gives us 180.
One gives us 180, so $30,000 over 10 years to do without HD. On community television?
I look better in HD when I'm on TV, so...
Oh, well, hey, you know, it's all about you, Mike. All about you, Mike. We should just do the HD then.
So I, I mean, HD channels are really the way everything's going, so...
So go with the HD then.
For option one, A.
Okay.
I like, yeah, I mean, option A is probably the best.
5% and $150,000. Okay.
Jason, anything?
I know that 5% will go down every year as people move away from subscription cable TV and go to streaming Netflix, things like that. So we get paid on the cable subscriptions.
Young adults are not subscribing. My sons, neither one of them has cable.
No, you can see the trends are all downward.
No? Anything?
No, no.
You're laid back. You want A? You like A?
Yeah, A is good.
What about D? You like D?
He likes D.
Ed, what do you want?
I, I like, I like B, the 180 with two access channels, and see if they go along with, as in C, in, in two to three years, convert over to an HD channel. See if they'll go with that, part of negotiations.
No, no, we're at the end of negotiations. This is what this email is saying, that we are at an impasse and we're at the end of negotiations, and these are our options.
If they won't go for the two or three years, convert to an HD channel, then, then no HD.
So you want B?
I'd, I'd go with B.
Phil?
I'll make a motion that we go with option A.
I like looking at you when we need a second right away so we can discuss. Any further discussion? All those in favor for option A?
All right.
All those opposed? Option A.
I'll call Bill in the morning and let him know.
Awesome. That way, we don't have to spend any more money on contracting with Comcast.
Correct.
Eight and a half years. All right, so we can move on from that. So let's, review of zoning board articles, bylaw changes. Is that Rebecca?
Yes, she's on.
Rebecca, we're back to you.
All right, sounds good. So on March 2nd, the planning board held a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5, to consider amendments and additions to the zoning bylaw to address the floodplain, overlay district, accessory apartments, conservation subdivision design, CSD, site plan approval, and common driveways. After that meeting, the board made a favorable recommendation on each as drafted for town meeting. So working with the building commissioner, we put together those seven changes, as you've seen in your packet. They are essentially changes that were made due to updated regulatory requirements, clarification and improvement of process, and as requested by the planning board. And Sam is here this evening as well via Zoom to speak specifically towards the floodplain and accessory apartment changes. So I'll turn it over to him first.
Sam, you're going to unmute yourself.
Yep, how's it going?
Hey, how you doing?
Good. So the floodplain regs, it was pretty much a mandated change, which worked out well because ours needed a little bit of updating. Really didn't change much as far as content. It was a lot of clarification and a lot of trying to get documents to jive between building code, NFIP requirements, and federal language. We were kind of using the same words to mean different things. So they, they've helped clarify that along with some terminology that's outdated, that's confusing, so we did that. The only change that was made, and this was one that I made that was in consultation... The only change that was made, and this was, uh, one that I made that was in consultation with KP Law, probably five years ago, we talked about this, is we banned any construction of, uh, single fami, single or two-family dwellings in the floodplain. KP just, uh, deemed that as an unconstitutional taking, uh, where there would be no use for those properties that are residential in the floodplain, and especially where the building code does allow that. So, you know, if they, someone were to build in the floodplain, they would have to meet the building code and elevate their house appropriately. I think there's only, when I looked at it, there was, I think, one buildable lot in the floodplain that was left. Um, and it's probably not likely to get built upon, but we just wanted to clarify that just for the sake of, um, you know, making things legal. The rest of it was federal, uh, requirements if we want to stay in the NFIP program.
Okay. What about the next section, accessory apartments?
Yep, uh, so real minor changes, there was a couple cross-throughs in the existing bylaw that no longer require you to, uh, be a relative to have an accessory apartment. And you no longer have to register in Salem Registry of Deeds. The registry of deeds portion, we eliminated because it was causing confusion at the registry and they asked us to. Uh, plus I think it was overly burdensome when we can track that in-house. As far as the change from, um, in-law to just accessory, it was something back when, uh, the original board came up with the accessory bylaw. We wanted to try that as an in-law bylaw at first with the intent of changing it to an accessory apartment bylaw, which would allow people to do rentals as long as the, you know, one of the units is owner-occupied. Um, and it's something that people ask for all the time to stay in their house and continue to live in Groveland or, and have extra income. Uh, and really with the in-law bylaw, if you want to get around it, when I go knock on the door and say, are you related? If you say yes, that's the end of my enforcement. So unless you want to, you know, be honest and say no and have me tell you to have those people leave, um, show the blood test, there's not much I can do.
Okay. And...
If there's no questions in regards to those, I can follow up with the last three?
I don't have any questions on any of those. I don't think anybody here is showing any, except for Ed, has questions on those two.
Referring to, uh, uh, the first one, Section twenty, uh, H five, all lots must be connected to the Groveland municipal water and sewer system. Uh, I can understand the sewer system, but, uh, the, the water system, uh, can you explain that? And, uh, in the explanation, if they wanted to have a separate, uh, a separate water, uh, system for irrigation purposes, would, would that be allowed?
So are we moving forward to the conservation subdivision design conversation?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Are you on bullet three, or you, we're asking questions about one and two at this point?
Um, well, whatever, uh, whatever Section, uh, twenty, uh, H five is, which would actually be on page four, uh, of the...
So that is, um, in reference to the conservation subdivision design. So if there's no further questions in regards to accessory apartments and/or floodplain, I'll proceed with an explanation of the following.
Yes, please.
Okay, so the, I'll, I'll start with the CSD. So, the planning board requested that we remove conflicting language to reinforce that sewer is required under a CSD special permit. So essentially, with the, the way that the regulations are written now, if you were to take advantage of any of the flexibility requirements that are offered under the CSD, you would need to connect to sewer. So elsewhere in the bylaw, it says that you could potentially not connect to sewer. But at the same time, why would you take advantage of a conservation subdivision design where you're not getting a relief from the dimensional requirements such as frontage and lot square footage? So essentially, it was giving people false hope and they were utilizing it for the use of a common drive, which is not the intent of a CSD, it's more of something that, you know, the town betters for the open space and all those other components. So, it was causing a lot of confusion and the language was so conflicting that in reality, again, you wouldn't take advantage of a CSD unless you had the modifications for the lot sizes. So we just wanted to change the language to reflect that and make sure that it's not confusing for those who are looking to utilize it as such.
So basically, what you're saying is, uh, they would have to connect to the water system and they would not be able to, uh, dig a well for irrigation purposes.
So if not necessarily for, for irrigation purposes, I, you just need to connect to, to water? I don't necessarily know if there's, you know, a, a well that you could do, I'd have to consult with the Water and Sewer Department if they wanted to have a well to just to do irrigation, but yet still connect to water, I'm not too sure what the regulations are for that. I'm assuming that once you connect to water, you can't have a well and vice versa, but I'm not positive. But the intent of this is just to make sure that the town has the infrastructure to support development and bring it throughout town, which we're not doing.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on bullet three? On to four, Rebecca.
Okay, so then the other one is site plan. So the current table of uses has a site plan column and it essentially says that site plan is required for pretty much anything except for a residential dwelling. So it's extremely confusing when residents and developers come in to me and Sam and they're kinda like, all right, so what's required and what's not? So, we proposed to eliminate the column and instead, uh, establish clear thresholds. Uh, we also want to change the minor site plan and establish a different type of process. Uh, we saw that when the Pennsylvan School came in, they're getting permitting through West Newbury and we didn't really have a clear defined minor site plan process, so we wanted to update that. And then lastly, the waiver process was not documented accordingly, so we wanted to add language to provide a process of how it was specifically, you would go about requesting that waiver from the board and documenting it appropriately so that you had some documentation moving forward.
Anybody? Good, next one?
And then the last one is the common driveways, and as we were just talking for the CSD, essentially people were taking, are trying to take advantage of the CSD special permit in order to get a common driveway. And that is not the intent of, of why the planning board put forward the conservation subdivision design. And in order to be accommodating to those that are looking to utilize a common driveway, we put together language to allow for a common driveway by special permit with language specifically concerning maintenance and ownership, since it was something that was happening in the past when this was in the regulations, that there wasn't a clear line of, of maintenance and future ownership once the lots were sold. So we made sure to put proper language in there so that there was no issue with enforcement moving forward. And one of the biggest things with this one, and one of the reasons the planning board wanted to move forward with it is that we require that the, the lots that would utilize a common driveway have proper frontage in order to move forward. So you're not alleviating anybody of their frontage requirements currently.
Okay, anybody have any questions on that? Okay, so what do you, you need us to approve these bylaw changes, is that what you need?
So essentially, um, what happens is these articles get placed on the town warrant and there's a recommendation from the planning board and there's a recommendation from the board of selectmen. So we would just ask that the board of selectmen, if in favor, as drafted and presented, would make a favorable recommendation for adoption at town meeting.
Sounds easy enough. Anybody have any questions for Rebecca or Sam?
Yes, did, did you get any input during the, uh, public hearing, either for or against this?
Um, we did not have anything necessarily against, there was some confusion when it came about for the CSD as, as in terms of what, um, Slep and Watson had mentioned, is that, you know, why would you not want them or would not allow them to connect to septic? But again, it's just a clarification point because if you're already gonna take those dimensional requirements, you are. And then the only other comment came from, um, Mitch Broner, and it was in regards to, um, accessory apartments. And Sam can speak more to his concerns.
So Mitch has been looking to include in the accessory apartment bylaw, uh, provision for detached accessory apartments. So right now, we currently, uh, permit only ones that are within an existing house or, uh, in, in like an attached garage above it. Uh, Mitch and a lot of people in town have a situation where they have an accessory building like a garage with space up above that could be utilized for housing. At some point, uh, I think most of the, uh, planning board, if not all of them, and myself are in agreement that it should be brought forward to town meeting to let the townspeople, uh, weigh in on that. Uh, but we wanted to take this first step to allow for, uh, accessory apartments to be non-in-law, um, apartments. And then next, uh, next year, we're hoping to put forward the, uh, detached portion and, uh, you know, see if the townspeople want that or not.
Okay, thank you.
But we just felt it was too big of a bite to take at this time.
Okay. I think we're good, that was quick and easy. Anything else from you guys?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Sam?
No, I'm good.
All right, um, Sam, we're gonna keep you on because we'll go right to your building inspector, yeah?
Is the board gonna take a motion to support these?
We can, I thought she said we just have to do it on the warrant.
It's gonna be on the warrant, we haven't voted, we're not voting on it.
You do, but the warrant has to be posted, um, in two weeks.
Right, but it doesn't need our recommendations, we posted before without recommendations.
We can post the warrant without your recommendation.
Correct.
Sure.
That's what I was planning on.
At town meeting, I think we're all in support of, of these changes, I think that's what Rebecca really and Sam are really looking for. Right? Am I correct in that assumption, Sam and Rebecca?
Rebecca?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I'm saying, yeah, basically at town meeting, you're looking for the selectmen to support your, uh, amended changes to the zoning bylaws, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Don't call me sir, genie Christmas.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Rebecca. Uh, Sam, the building inspector's fee increase?
He actually has something to say.
Oh, wait. Sorry, I'm not used to Jason asking questions.
Moderator, moderator.
He actually says that we endorse it. And if we don't do anything, he doesn't say that we endorse it.
No, we will vote all our recommendations, we just don't have to do it tonight, that's all.
So we're gonna do it next week?
Usually on the town, on the warrant, it'll say, Board of Selectmen, approve favorable action or non-favorable action.
And we just vote them all.
So you're making a distinction between town meeting warrant that gets posted?
Correct.
And the document that goes into the, in front of the people at town meeting is two different documents?
Yes.
It cannot be.
Well, you just have favorable, unfavorable, and we circle it when we make our decision. We've done this, well, for years.
Warrant that gets posted on the nineteenth of April is the warrant, it's not like you can have a different warrant for town meeting.
No, we're putting this on the warrant.
Of your recommendations, if you don't vote anything, then your recommendations will not be in the posted warrant and won't be in front of the town meeting unless...
Well, let's just vote, uh...
Then I'll make a motion that we adopt the five proposed amendments to the zoning board bylaws as suggested by Rebecca Oldham, our town planner, and Mr. Sam Jocelyn, our town building inspector.
Second.
All those in favor?
We're now official.
We're official. Thanks, Rebecca.
But, again, we've often...
Sam?
Made recommendations...
Yes, thank you, sir, sir, ma'am.
All right, so your permit fee schedule, I'm looking at that now.
Oh, I didn't, I buried that.
You want to add any color to this, or should we just, uh...
Do you want me to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so seven, almost seven years ago when I started, uh, we did do a fee adjustment. And, uh, with the, uh, current budget, um, as you guys know, I was looking to increase, uh, my rate to be comparable with surrounding towns. One of the things I did not want to do, or try not to do, was impact the town's budget, because I know it is, um, tight. Uh, one of the ways to do that, and one of the ways that's recommended by the state, is to have a portion of the, uh, expenses and salaries and wages covered by the fees taken in by the town. Uh, so I did a, uh, fee survey to take a look at those. All of the other surrounding towns are, uh, more than our ten dollars per thousand that we charge, with the exception of Newburyport and Amesbury. Uh, Newburyport and Amesbury are cities that can make up the volumes, or the, the difference in volume. So the number of permits they do, although they have a lower, uh, or the, the same dollar per thousand as we do, uh, just because they have so many more permits and the dollar value is so much higher with their commercial base, uh, they get a lot more money. Uh, the next, uh, or the only other one other than us is Rowley, uh, is at ten. Uh, everyone else is higher, West Newbury's at twelve, Havel's at fourteen, uh, Georgetown is twelve. So I thought it was pretty reasonable to bring us up one dollar per thousand from ten to eleven. That will cover the proposed increase for my department. Uh, the other good piece is we have some sizable projects coming up in town that will, um, you know, also help us capture some additional revenues for the town to help, uh, help with that process.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Occupancy permits?
Say that again?
Occupancy permits? Do you want me to, to go through this, or is any of this other changes?
No, no, um, that, that's the only change, all the other, I just, I printed out the current and the proposed.
Okay.
The only change is the, uh, per thousand amount, which went from ten, or I'm proposing to go from ten to eleven.
Oh. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Sam? That seems reasonable to me, anybody want to make a motion? Jason does.
Is it just two pages? Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's, he's only, it's only the first...
Just the first page, okay, not the second page, all right, I got that.
I'll make a motion to change the P, the permit fee schedule as, uh, requested by Sam.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All right, Sam, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
You too. Thank you. All right, so let's, um, let's jump over to field use, Pennsylvan youth football and field use fee, let's try and wrap those two together. Bill?
Where's that page?
I couldn't tell you about youth football, usually they don't even ask for anything until the fall.
What's that?
That's who's asking for the field use for Pennsylvan football.
Do we have a fee schedule?
I, I did not get one, Bill has a fee.
Oh, okay. Bill's gonna tell us.
So one is just permit to use the field and the other one is a topic on the fee to use any of the fields?
Correct.
Okay, so...
So these are mutually exclusive of each other.
So let's do the permit for youth football. It seems pretty simple.
Is this because of the building project, or this is what we always do?
Um, I think it's something we always do, the youth football has been practicing down by the pines for several years, probably five anyways.
Oh, more than that, since we, since they moved from Strawberry Fields.
Well, Strawberry Fields is like playing out in the Mojave Desert.
It was dusty, they couldn't see each other.
Right, yeah.
I don't know what the problem is.
At the time, it was better than what they had in, uh, in Merrimack.
Yes, so then we moved them down to the pines and they've been down there for a number of years, so I think permitting that is easy to approve.
Yeah, and they use the, the lower field?
Yes.
That we've...
Yes.
But I think that's...
Someone to make a motion, so we can go ahead and let them use the field.
So just make a motion, let Pennsylvan youth football use the field?
They don't want it such a large.
It's actually the utility field, it's not the...
It's the far field, the way down.
So the far field?
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion on the field use for youth football? All in favor? All right, that's easy. Field use fee, that's usual.
Okay. So, as I said before, one of the treasures we have here in this town is the pines. And it's in high demand. There's a lot of folks that want to use those two fields. And typically, um, we just let them use it, uh, much to our detriment. Uh, what I'm proposing is a fee, and I've looked around at the other towns, what they do and how they do it. Uh, so what I'm suggesting is for the high school and for Babe Ruth, which is a hundred percent Pennsylvan, uh, we normally charge them a, um, in-kind services. Uh, meaning basically that Babe Ruth typically... Uh, meaning basically that Babe Ruth typically pays out of their own pocket to pay for the field to, to be cut and certain, um, maintenance on the field. Softball does the same thing with their field. Uh, high school will chip in as well. What we're talking about, or what I'm talking about here are the groups such as AAU baseball or softball that would like to use the great facilities we have down here. And my proposal would be to charge a fee of twenty-five dollars per event, which is well within what the other chi, towns are charging, but with a caveat. And this is what a lot of the other towns are doing. They're saying that if the group basically consists of, and the numbers range sixty-six percent to seventy-five percent of the town, then typically the fees are waived, which I'm all in favor for. If, however, the groups consist of, uh, people that are non-residents of either the town or in this case, the Penntucket community, I think those are the folks that we should charge a fee to use our fields. I'm proposing, as I said, twenty-five dollars per use, and then it's up to this board to really say, you know, what's the composition of the group? Does it have to be fifty percent Groveland or Penntucket? Sixty-six percent Groveland or Penntucket? Seventy-five percent? What is, you know, what's the makeup that we're gonna say, okay, we'll waive the field, the fee, because the group consists predominantly of this? So we could do it two ways. If the group, say, is fifty percent or more Groveland, it's free. Sixty-six percent or more Penntucket, no fee. I, I, I don't know how you wanna structure that, but that's what I have in mind and what I've seen the other towns around us are doing.
What if we do something like sixty, or fifty-one percent or fifty-five percent Penntucket? And then there's no fee?
That, that's fine too.
And that should cover a majority of those.
It's gonna cover a majority of the groups. We don't want, my, my intention is not to hurt anyone that lives in the town or in the district, because we're all in this together. Um, it's the, it's the other groups. Ed's made mention of them before. He's gone down to the park and, and, and I've gone down there before, where I see Dairy, New Hampshire, playing Warwick, Rhode Island. And I say, what are these, what are these teams doing in my field? I can't use it, but I've got two people that don't even belong in this state using my field. Those are the, those are the fee, those are the folks that I think we wanna, um, get fees from. We, we wanna tap that resource. We've got a beautiful diamond here, um, and, and we should charge for it accordingly.
But how did those teams know to get use of the field? How did they know someone else wasn't on it?
I think some of the leagues have been subletting, been subletting, been subletting.
That's what I was assuming. So they're subletting.
There was a really loosey-goosey kind of process that went on here. I'm not sure how it took place, but I've noticed in the last couple of years, it's, it's not favorable to the folks in this town or in the Penntucket community to have that, those fields used by out-of-towners at the detriment to the folks in town or in the community.
Correct.
They wanna use it, they need to pay a fee. They'll be scheduled out. They'll have their insurance certificate, so there's no liability to the town. That's another area that really wasn't, um, managed very well, I'd say. Uh, but then again, it's hard to manage it when nobody knows what's going on and they just show up and start playing.
Right.
So in all fairness to everybody, I don't think there's any finger pointing. I think we just have to do a better job of getting that message out that is by permit, it is a fee, and it will be enforced.
So then, um, what would happen is, I mean, you issue the permits to the teams that normally use the fields that are either Penntucket or Groveland, right?
Right. Right now, uh, the high school has the field basically Monday through Friday.
Okay.
From right after school till typically five, five-thirty.
Okay.
And because of the COVID, they will require some Saturday mornings this year, which is an oddity. Not typically, they don't usually use anything on Saturdays or Sundays.
Okay.
Penntucket Babe Ruth typically follows the high school.
Okay.
Uh, they'll use the field from five-thirty until dusk, uh, to have their practices, their games, and whatever.
Okay. And so who plays on the weekends?
Well, right now, the high school team has, um, they don't have exact dates, but, uh, the A.D., Mr. Thorne, has told me that they will be some games on Saturday mornings, but he does not have a definitive schedule yet. The other folks that would like to use that field on the weekends are the AAU teams.
The who?
The AAU teams. They're the private organizations that, um, these kids can come from anywhere in the world. And they'll put together a team, and then typically they, they have tremendous brick and mortar facilities, but they don't have a venue to play. And that's what they look for. And most of them are willing to pay for, for venues like we have, because they don't, they just don't have the resources. They don't have, they don't have ball fields.
Right. So we would direct them to come through here and get a one-time permit? That's what you're saying?
It could be a one-time permit. It could be a permit for a series, for a season, you know, for a schedule of ten, twelve games over the course of the spring or the summer or the fall.
And we would know that the field was free those times from the other teams that already used it?
Well, yes, because, like Catherine and I did last fall, we put together a schedule.
Okay.
With all these different groups who wanted to use it, when they wanted to use it, and, and then we sorted it out so there were no conflicts.
Right. And then, but it rains, then somebody moves, right?
It rains, it rains. I mean, I, you know, my God can't predict the weather.
Right. So you think this could work, though?
Oh, I know it could work.
Okay, that's good enough.
So I think what we're looking at is what is the number we wanna do? Is it fifty-five percent, or whatever we're looking at? I think fifty-five Penntucket athletes that would cover all the residents of Groveland.
It should. And, you know, I'll be honest with you. Most of the ball players, and I've been involved in, 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 in baseball here for a long time, most of the ball players are Groveland kids. It just, I don't know why, it just is.
So let's make a motion if we wanna enact that, so we can. Yep. Well, let's make a motion and get a second. Then we're gonna further discussion, so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that there fifty-five percent or more Penntucket, no fee? That's what we're saying? And then otherwise, they pay a fee and show insurance, and the fee is twenty-five dollars per game?
Twenty-five dollars per event.
Per event. Okay.
And that would cover, that would go to cover, you know, maintenance costs, bathrooms, things like that.
Ed?
Um, it was a good, a good presentation, some good thoughts there, uh, but I think the, uh, the for-profit teams ought to be more than, uh, twenty-five. And, uh, but I don't know what, but it, it seems like a for-profit team ought to be able to afford, uh, more than twenty-five dollars per event. And then the second thing, maybe, uh, these other teams like the Babe Ruth or the high school, uh, when they get their permit, uh, it be pointed out, no subletting their time or, uh, uh, so that they bounce off of, uh, like, say, we'll say the Babe Ruth, and I don't mean to pick on them, but, uh, so the Babe Ruth can't loan their time to, uh, to somebody else.
Definitely not.
But it should be, it should be spelled out in the permit, that, that, that's not allowed. If they don't show up on that particular day, then they, uh, let, let somebody else.
Now, to your point, I, I, I came up with a twenty-five dollar fee because I, I don't want to be so high that we generate no revenue at all. So if we, i- if this generates a lot of interest, maybe we do kick up the fee. Again, simple supply and demand economics model would say, hey, we've got more demand than supply. We can jack up the fee. But I thought twenty-five would be a good baseline to start, see where it goes, see what kind of interest it, it generates, and then we go from there. I had to start somewhere.
Yeah, I agree. I agree that.
You talk about per event, if you, like, there, there's been tournaments down there on the weekends where, uh, you've got several games, so each one would be an event?
Each one would be an event.
Okay. No, it sounds, no, it makes sense. I just think that for the for-profit teams, it ought to be more than twenty-five.
Let's start with that and see what, uh, see what happens, and we can adjust easily.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we, we can throw a dot and start anywhere we want. I, I just thought this would be a good baseline and, and see where it, it goes from here.
Okay. So, yeah.
I got a request by email from, uh, the Haverhill Athletic Department. They have, they're, um, requesting, uh, Pines area for use of their crew team. Apparently, they've done this in the past. They'd like to do it again. I don't know what to tell them, but I'm listening to the discussion. Do you want me to just refer this gentleman to you, Bill?
No, that is a completely separate kind of thing. We did charge them a fee. You can find it. I know we did for the last two years. My first, my first comment to them would be, come and take your garbage out of here before you, you, you set up anything else. There's been a broken crew boat down at that, along the fence for almost two stinking years.
Wow. You're not gonna fix it?
I don't think you can fix it, because it's almost busted in half.
Well, I'll tell them to take it wherever they're gonna fix it and store it there.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you know, I don't mind being a good neighbor, but I, I don't, I don't like being taken advantage of either.
So the, these folks aren't conflicting with any other field use or whatever facility they're using?
No, they're gonna use the river.
They use the boat ramp and, and they.
So tell them, okay, the same fee they get paid last year.
I think we can jack it up five percent. Cost of living.
Sounds good.
All right. All those in favor of the field use fee?
All right. And Catherine, I'll have to work with you on that PDF form. I think it's a PDF. I'm hoping it's a Word doc that we can revise it, because I noticed that Denise's contact information is still on the permit.
Okay, we're gonna take that out.
Yeah, that's one thing that has to be changed. And then you'll have to reach back out to, well, I'll talk to you later, Mr. Caruso, because he can't take that permit out the way he wanted to.
All right, so let's move to Finance Department Contractor Appointment of Treasurer Collector.
So I gave the board, uh, a memo, um, and basically all the things that we've done in the Finance Department, um, stipends, salary increases, movement around and all that, all noted there, would all still be within the budget and still generate a nine thousand dollars, uh, five thousand dollar surplus. However, a twenty-five hundred dollar a week contract treasurer is obviously gonna, uh, break the balance of that budget. And if it were to continue all the way through June thirty, then that would result in a fifty-two thousand dollar, uh, budget overrun. So I don't think, practically speaking, I'm working on trying to figure out a way to, uh, to fund that with a transfer within the existing budget from the surplus area. Worst-case scenario, we'll have to do a supplemental transfer from available revenue, um, on, at the end of town meeting with an article to do that. However, the, I looked at the bylaw with an eye to, is there a way that we could terminate having to pay that twenty-five hundred a week? Obviously, if we had a treasurer, staff treasurer, the amount that we would be paying that person per week is about half of this. So I looked at the bylaw to see if there was a way that we could do that while the repeal of the bylaw, Finance Department bylaw recommended by the Governance Committee, is pending. Because remember, if their recommendation is approved at town meeting to repeal the Finance Director bylaw, two-three-six-A, it's gonna take anywhere from three months to a year. Now, if you have to pay this twenty-five hundred dollars, it's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if it goes a full year. It, it, the appearance, when you look at the bylaw, seems to suggest at first that you can't have a treasurer. However, if you look at the bylaw, it does allow the Finance Director to assign duties to anyone.
Can I?
I don't see.
Did this memo come in our packet, or is it new tonight?
It's in your packet, and I sent it to you Saturday, March twentieth as well.
It wasn't in the online packet that I got?
Yeah, well, you all got it by email anyways.
Okay, so you're, so it's in the pile we got tonight?
And it is in the pack.
But it wasn't in the Thursday?
And it is in the packet too, yes.
Right.
The one that you ate?
That was one of the ones I was missing. Yes, that memo.
Oh, 'cause you were missing it. Okay, so that's not in there. Okay, so then I gotta, I'll look here then, because I haven't found it yet.
So the way we can do this, I believe, is we advertise for a treasurer collector soon, I mean, like this week. We start taking resumes. If the town meeting approves deletion of the Finance Direct Department bylaw, then we continue with the interview process, hire a treasurer collector with the idea of having them in place by July one. If we could get them sooner, that's fine.
I'll find it.
So we're not committed unless the town meeting approves repeal of the Finance Director bylaw, which basically says they're supporting, you know, a town administrator with a treasurer form of government. If town meeting rejects that, then we would not finish the hiring process. In other words, we wouldn't, we're not gonna have this finished by town meeting, no matter what. But if town meeting approves the, the repeal of the Finance Director bylaw, then you can hire a treasurer collector and the Finance Director, Mia's interim, the new one, whenever you hire, well, new town administrator, um, would just assign them the treasurer collector duties. Now, it's a little bit of a wink and a nod. I get it. But I think it's justified, because at twenty-five hundred dollars a week, you just can't afford to keep doing this forever. You cannot, I don't think you can afford to do it until the bylaw gets repealed. That's the point, because it's, it will literally cost you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from July one. I mean, do the math, two, twenty-five hundred a week times fifty-two weeks. So this is a way to stop that, but only if the town meeting approves repealing the Finance Department bylaw. Now, the reality is, if town meeting approves it, it's gonna get repealed, because the Massachusetts Legislature is gonna do exactly what the town meeting asks them to do. So basically what we're doing is we're acting as if it were repealed.
Trying to save three months' worth of work.
And saving a boatload of money. Simple as that. Now, we could wait till town meeting approves repeal of the Finance Department bylaw and then start the hiring process. And that'll put you three months behind to the tune of twenty-five hundred a week times three months. What I'm saying is, why wait? Let's get on with this, because I have a very high level of confidence in what the committee's been saying, because it makes a lot of sense, and that it's gonna end up getting approved one way or the other. And so I feel very, uh, very good, you know, with moving, moving forward. Again, with the caveat that the treasurer collector is not gonna be hired until town meeting first acts, and, and not, not until then.
Any, any questions for Kevin, sort of there, Ed?
And as far as the hiring process goes, whatever the board wants is fine. That's, that's up to you guys. I mean, I think that's a second question, but I just wanna get the board's reaction to the concept here and see if this is something you're, you're happy with.
Ed?
I have none.
Bill?
No.
Kathy?
It's the first thing I agree with for a while here, so.
All right, let's not.
The sun is coming up.
Must be an idea then.
Off the clock now, okay? Note the time. Right now, seven fifty-eight. But I will say for the record that this is what I was trying to ask you to do in November, and I really wasn't as clear as I should have been, but, uh, and also in, in concurrence with what town council said, that this, um, interim thing we're doing can only be temporary anyway. So I don't know what the word temporary means in legal use terms, but to me it means stop it as soon as you possibly can. So, um, I would be interested in doing this. I would be interested in having the Board of Selectmen involved in the interview and hiring process, and let's get it going on.
That's a long way to say yes. You're okay with it.
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, I'm okay with this.
All right, so let's take a vote. Who wants to make a motion?
So make a motion that we post the, it's going to be the Assistant Treasurer position.
Yeah.
This is the job description we have right now.
Formal title will be Assistant Treasurer Collector, but I'm gonna advertise it as a Treasurer Collector.
Right, but we were looking for someone that doesn't need to be trained, so we post the job description we have, right? Okay, so I'll make a motion. We post the Assistant Treasurer Collector job and begin.
Treasurer Collector, Kathy.
Treasurer Collector job.
Thank you.
Assistant, though, right?
Because if I post an assistant job, you're going to get assistant-level applicants, and that's not the person who can do the job.
Okay, but.
It must be posted as a Treasurer Collector.
You said right here, appoint an Assistant Treasurer Collector.
When we identify the person, then I will explain to them. When we identify the person, then I will explain to them that they're going to have a, a transition period.
Okay, but I'm reading your words, to advertise for and appoint an Assistant Treasurer Collector. So, I'm just saying, post the job description we have now.
It'll be advertised as a Treasurer Collector position in order to attract the caliber of candidate that it was required to do the job.
I thought that was the reason we ran into a problem last time, because we can't do that?
When the person gets hired, I will explain to them that they legally can't have that title yet. They're gonna have all the authority and all the job. They're gonna have-
Isn't this like false advertising?
Yes, this is a wink.
I don't know what we're doing here.
Yes, this is a wink and a nod. This is exactly what this is. So, they are going to do all the work, have all the responsibility, but they can only be given the title, they're gonna get the pay, but they can only have the title once the Finance Director bylaw is in fact repealed, because-
And that's if they're hired before town meeting.
Right. You cannot legally give them the title until the bylaw is repealed.
Which is not gonna be till, like-
You can give them the duties and the pay. You can do that.
Correct. I agree with that. I just didn't, I thought initially that the first time you advertised, when you put the Treasurer Collector advertisement out, I thought that was a violation of the by-
Well, we took it down because frankly, the board was a little nervous. You didn't have the committee's recommendation yet. It was still in flux and he didn't want to proceed, and so we went with the interim instead.
So, is your feeling that we can advertise with the job description we have now?
Yeah, the job description is fine.
With a slightly different title and that's not breaking any laws or bylaws?
Not breaking it, nope.
Just bending them. We're bending them.
They're not gonna be appointed Treasurer Collector. They're gonna be appointed Assistant. That's the title they're gonna have.
Well, as long as we're not gonna get in trouble for doing it, we need-
So, think of it-
Well, we need to do something. We can't afford what we're doing now.
Somebody does a pay survey, we're gonna have the most-
Was that a motion in there?
The highest-paid assistant.
Yeah, take, take a go.
There was a second. Jason said, "All right."
Yep, there we go.
Is there any other discussion? No? All right. All those in favor?
Great. And I'll get back-
Can I ask one follow-up question to that? So, are you, no, this is quick. So, are you saying that the title will change to Treasurer Collector after town meeting votes or after it's actually repealed?
After the legislature repeals it, because the bylaw right-
I understand, I understand. I just, it was like two different moving targets.
But we're gonna advertise as Treasurer Collector. We're gonna tell the person, you are the Treasurer by function and by pay.
I understand. I gotcha.
But the formal title comes later.
I was just curious if it was based on legislature or our town-
And I'll, I'll, if any of the board members, if any of you have any suggestions about how you wanna see the hiring process structured, please drop me an email. And if I don't hear from anybody, I'll put something together and send it to you to see how you react to it, okay?
Oh, why don't you just send us?
And it'll feature heavy board involvement. No worries.
Thanks.
Let's move on to the, uh, elephant in the room, the operating budget.
Oh, do we have to?
So, this is going to be rather interesting, because it seems to be some discrepancies between people on, oh, no, I'm not done talking yet.
You don't get to finish Mike.
I know, I don't get to do anything. I can't bend any rules. I can't, I don't even get to run the meetings anymore. About surpluses or shortages and, I think there's a lot to talk about and it's already after eight. Ruth has a comment.
Just my point of clarification is, following the Board of Health, um, that number that was wrong, while you guys were doing the rest of your business, I went through and verified the entire budget document that we have.
Yeah, let me, let me make this simple. This document that you all have, yeah, the big giant list of all the departments, that document without the fiscal twenty-two request was given to all the departments way back in, I don't know, November, I think it was. I can't be responsible if they lifted the number off that document wrong and put it on their budget page, which is exactly what somebody in the Board of Health did. So, what I can tell you is that the spreadsheet that you've got, that I prepared with Ellen, is accurate. That's accurate.
Okay. However, the budgeted fiscal twenty-one numbers?
Yep.
There's a lot of discrepancies versus the budget that was posted in last year's town warrant.
Ah, that would be a problem.
That was posted where?
In the town warrant, last year's warrant, the budget that we approved last year. So, I'm curious, what I suspect might hap, have happened is if there were line item transfers done somewhere along the way?
During the year.
That those are the numbers?
If you did any line item transfers under forty-one thirty-three, then that would show-
But still, that doesn't make sense, because that's twenty-one.
Then that would show, that would alter what town meeting voted, because town meeting votes this, but you authorize a transfer after May first, it gets posted as what you authorized.
Yeah, but I'm not thinking spread. That would affect twenty. We haven't done line item transfers for twenty-one.
If, then, all I can tell you is that the numbers on that piece of paper came straight out of the general ledger VEDAR system. Those are autumn, those are, those were-
So, then maybe we should look at a few of the discrepancies and try to understand them.
If you can identify for me any discrepancies between the town meeting vote and, and what's on that piece of paper, I'll be happy to look at it, but I don't have the time. I don't have any way to go into the general ledger and check it against the warrant and make sure they match.
I might have an email from the clerk with me.
It may take massive amounts of time. I mean, you know, if it's in the VEDAR system, Ruth, which is where that report comes from, then that is what the town accountant-
All right, well, there's at least ten discrepancies.
That's what the town accountant has recorded in the town's books, so.
I understand, but I'm saying that there's at least ten discrepancies in what we're looking at as budgeted twenty-one versus what we voted.
If you can get that to me, I will check each one of them and get back to you and let you know-
I'll take this one.
What the difference is, but there are no discrepancies in the FY twenty-two budget requests, and that's what you're actually looking at and voting on, not the twenty-ones or the twenties.
Well, except that you compare.
Except that the requests were made based on-
Bad data.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the requests were based on a two percent change or a ten percent change-
Right, like assessors to managers.
Of what we believed to be another number, so it's just making me go in a lot of circles.
Well, again, if you can tell me where you think this is a discrepancy, I'll be happy to review it. I just can't review a couple of thousand lines.
So, are we talking-
I just reviewed every single line during your meeting.
Again, those numbers came right out of the general ledger.
And again, they're different than what we voted last year, so.
If they're wrong, then somehow, what town, what town meeting appropriated last year for that particular line and what got recorded in the ledger got recorded wrong, and I, what can I tell you? I don't know how that could happen. It's, I certainly wasn't here, so I, I can't speculate for you.
But we can do, we can do a reconciliation of that account, though, and figure out why the number changed, right?
Well, if you show me, if somebody gives me a piece of paper and says, here's the difference for this thing, I'll go find out.
Tell you what.
I can come in tomorrow.
You give me this budget, right?
I can't talk to the town anymore.
You give me this, in all the detail, where all the account numbers are next to this stuff, and I can do that for you in a day. But without it, I have no chance and nobody else has a hope in hell to do that, because there's not enough detail.
That, that piece of paper is identical to your, to what you voted at town meeting, in terms of the lines and all the specific departments and lines. What Ruth is saying is that she thinks there's a few numbers next to the line, which are different in the report I gave you from what town meeting voted last year.
Yes, we, we, we already pointed out one of them.
If you can show me those four, five, ten places, whatever it is, I will go look at the town meeting warrant, the town clerk's town meeting warrant, that says, here's what was voted, and I will compare that to what's in VEDAR. Now, what I'm gonna tell you right now is, if VEDAR, if your general ledger has a number in it, that's the number. That is the number, because that's what you set your budget on, that's what you budgeted your tax rate on. So, if it's different than what town meeting did, I hope to heck there's a good explanation from somebody, because it shouldn't be. But the point is, it doesn't matter, because your tax rate was set on the basis of that piece of paper. That's what's in VEDAR.
Do you want me to offer one example?
That's what's in your accounting system.
Yeah, actually, if you have a list-
One, I have a list of them, but one good example is a simple budget, legal expense. This spreadsheet says that fiscal twenty-one, we budgeted sixty-eight thousand four hundred, and I know we-
Which budget are you talking about?
Legal.
Legal.
And that one did kinda jump out at me, because it's kind of an odd number. I know that we did-
Yeah, it is odd.
Sixty-five thousand for legal.
Yeah.
So, then when you try to bump legal up by, you know, ten percent, it's based off of another number.
Well, don't do it from memory, for heaven's sakes. You get it?
I didn't. I did it from memory, and then I looked at the town warrant that I have with me, and I, and I looked at the warrant posted online to make sure that the warrant that I printed is the most current one. I looked at the-
You say the warrant that was posted. Are you talking about the town clerk's minutes of the town meeting? Because the only document that's a legal document is the town clerk's signed, sealed, tested, attested town meeting warrant, which is what we use to set the tax rate. And that is supposedly what is on this piece of paper. I, I, I mean, folks, you have a town accountant. They give me the number. I trust this is accurate. I don't personally go and check them.
I understand, and something went awry, so we need to figure out what went awry.
Yeah, I, I, I see it, yeah. Sixty-eight four, which is just a really weird-
You're talking the town council number?
Yes.
Yeah, sixty-eight four is what the town meeting minutes say is you appropriated, and I, I don't know.
I, I, I can't believe-
I mean, I don't know what you all doing from memory and things, but that's what-
I'm not doing anything from memory.
I'm looking at, this is-
I can go back and look at my notes. My memory isn't that good. I need to look at data.
But is that the attested copy, because town meeting might've changed the number? I don't know, folks. I wasn't here.
I know for a fact I was at the town meeting and nobody made a motion to adjust the legal budget by a quirky number.
What would you like me to do?
I don't know.
Uh, okay, I guess I would like to know what is the real amount that were appropriated at town meeting, Article thirty-eight, I believe it is, right? Uh, last year, and I can tell you right now, I can't believe, I, I know it, because I have it here, Article thirty-six. And there's no way on God's green earth that we appropriated a quirky number like sixty-eight thousand four hundred.
There's maybe a dozen discrepancies that are-
Here's Article thirty-eight. I have a copy of it right here, Article thirty-eight, and appropriated two thousand twenty, sixty-five thousand, requested FY twenty-twenty-one, sixty-five thousand, Selectmen recommend sixty-five thousand finance, sixty-five thousand.
What is that document you're holding up? What is it? There's only one document that I can accept as an official record.
To see if the town will vote to raise the following sums to defray towns' charges for the fiscal year end.
That means nothing. Does it have the town?
It means nothing?
It means nothing. Does it have the town clerk's seal on it?
Mike?
Is it the attested copy from the town clerk? If it's not, it could be a piece of paper that got generated sometime during the budget process. It might, it might not be, if, if there was a- The only record that legally can go to the state and that goes into the general ledger to set the books up for the new year is the minutes taken by the town clerk of the town meeting action. She takes these numbers following the town meeting, and the town accountant does the same thing at the same time, right there, live at the meeting, on a computer. And at the end of the meeting, they compare to make sure they've captured every single vote of the town meeting, and then the town clerk puts a seal on it and signs it. And that is the official record of the town meeting. That record goes on to a schedule and the tax rate is one of the attached schedules, which ends up setting the tax rate for the year. Now, I am told by the town accountant that this piece of paper represents what is in the general ledger for July one, two thousand and twenty, as your budget for the year, under the column Budgeted FY twenty-one. That's all I know.
So, it, the copy you have in your hand, is that the copy that's signed by the town clerk?
These numbers would have been taken from the record simultaneously kept by the town clerk and either the town accountant or the Finance Director, or both. I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, so I have, I have the same thing, and we are obviously at odds, so can we go get the one that's from the town clerk, so that we get it straight from the horse's mouth? We don't have to debate over this?
I don't know if she's here now. I can ask her, sure.
You wanna go see if Beth is still here? I don't think she is.
Beth is not here.
I don't think so either, but I mean, we, we're just, we-
The one I'm looking at, online, that's posted as twenty-twenty final annual town meeting. Matt, just the one that I have.
Matches sixty-five thousand.
Beth isn't here, Bills. We can't do that.
You can't do that today.
I can't do it right now, yeah.
But, I mean, we, we, we've got to get to the bottom of it.
Can I just say something?
What's the correct source document?
Here it is. They have an encumbered amount of thirty-four hundred, and then it goes to sixty-eight four hundred. Would that explain it, thirty-four hundred encumbered? That would, that's your four hundred now.
Well, yeah, because it was sixty-five thousand on the meeting.
That's it. There was an encumbered amount carried into this year, thirty-four hundred. It's on the variance report.
Do you do supplemental transfers at town meeting? Uh, no, I don't need to ask the question. I know you do. I know you do, because-
Special town meeting.
Because I've had the conversation with the town account, with the town accountant, and I've had it with the Department of Revenue, and it's already recorded in the recap. You vote extra money into these budgets in the spring of the year. You do, you have a special town meeting. And I saw a warrant article and a list of departments, and you put more money into several of them. The amount of money that ends up getting recorded in this column is the combination of what you voted at the town meeting in the spring of last year. Now, remember, for fiscal twenty-one, it would've been the money you voted in June of two thousand twenty and any additional money that was put into any budget at any time during the year for any reason. I, I, I don't know if there was or there wasn't. I'm just saying, if you do supplemental transfers, that's how they get recorded. I don't know if that helps you or not. I just don't know. I'm sorry.
So, one second. So, Kathy, the variance report, that's where the-
Shows there was thirty-four hundred dollars encumbered, so that explains it. So, we voted the number you think.
Sixty-five thousand, and then the thirty-four hundred, it makes up that, that line item, that sixty-eight four.
But that was like, that was encumbered-
Yeah.
From a previous whatever. So, it wasn't really the budget we voted at town meeting. We voted the sixty-five.
An encumbrance, an encumbrance carries forth from the prior year. If there's a balance in the budget-
Correct.
And there's a bill pending against that balance, then that amount, the town accountant can treat it in two different ways. She can treat it as an addition to the, uh, budget voted at town meeting-
Yeah.
And set that up in the books for July one.
Right.
Or she can carry it against the prior fiscal year until the bill comes in, pay it, and then close the books.
Yeah, but that's what it is.
Town accountants do it a different, some do it one way, some do it the other. Both are perfectly acceptable accounting practice. And if, and if she had a thirty-five hundred dollar encumbrance and she added to the town meeting appropriation and then closed the books and then waited for that bill to come in against that money, that would be perfectly legal. And that would explain the variance. Now-
And so, we vote-
So, it is possible-
Yeah.
That you could have a town meeting vote that says one thing and encumbrance that adds to it.
Correct.
And then the number is different here than what you voted at town meeting.
Correct.
Nobody did anything wrong. It's just the way she treats the encumbrance, it can be treated in one of two ways.
Right.
Right. We weren't, we were just trying to understand why it didn't, why it was a weird number.
There's, there's a million explanations. The problem is, I don't know which one is the right explanation.
But it seems like to, to make an adjustment over your prior fiscal year's budget, you wouldn't want those encumbered numbers in there.
Because that's a carried over.
The encumbrance numbers.
Yeah.
Well, ideally, ideally-
Because it really, because it's a one-time.
Wasn't for that period of time.
Ideally, what you'd probably want is you'd want the pure appropriation and have the encumbrance listed separately somehow, so you can see it differently.
They're not even all that mean. They're, they're confusing on a, but, I mean, overall, it was, say, thirty thousand dollars.
I will tell you this. This is the first time you've ever had this report. You've never had this before. I created this. And the reason I created it is because the report you had prior to this didn't give you the prior year's actual expended. It only gave you the prior year's town meeting vote.
Yeah, we did.
No, we have the actual.
So, I gave you-
We did.
Yeah, we did.
We always had like four columns.
Okay, fine.
We did. We did.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna show it to you. This is what we used to get, and it does, it shows the one you spent, what we spent in twenty nineteen, spent in twenty nineteen, appropriated twenty twenty, uh, requested twenty twenty-one.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, yeah, we are used to getting that.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, okay, I stand corrected. I've never seen this report, but good to know.
So, sorry, Mike, that I interrupted you. I just-
No, it's all right. I don't know.
Clarify the fact that there were, now you can go back.
You guys are the budget people, right? You guys are the granular people. I look at the bottom line, right? So, this is good that the four of you are talking about.
Trying to get your budget pulled together this year was, was a bit challenging, since there wasn't a lot, no institutional memory and no one I could talk to, and so, you know.
Kevin, it's tough in your position coming into a, a role that you didn't know exactly what was happening beforehand.
Well, it was less than that, honestly. It's that there's not a lot of records in that computer and there's no one I can ask, so.
So, should we, and I hate to do this, because it's getting tight, but- So, should we, and I hate to do this because it's getting tight, but should we maybe go back? The four of you? Redo your numbers. You say you found ten, maybe carryover things. And then have a special meeting next Monday to go and finalize this? Is that enough time to kind of rectify what we might be seeing as far as these numbers go?
Yeah, we should verify the numbers. We should also-
One, the, the, the final accurate, God bless, one from Beth.
And then we're gonna-
Build it off of that.
The things for the finance department, where the, where the changes, I would think would go in a special article, not in the omnibus. So we don't bog down. Because typically, they go through the omnibus and you just call a hold if you don't like something. So like any big ticket items, we put it off in an article that follows it, and then that changes the salaries. It just goes smoother. They're used to it. Everybody's used to it. They go, you know, call a hold. They read each bottom, but they, the moderator will just select my budget. And nobody, he just reads the bottom line and then he goes back for any holds. Like, not every line, the bottom, the total.
I can certainly easily enough take the town clerk's certified town meeting minutes, because all the lines are identical.
Yeah, she has that.
Through every one of those lines. And between Ellen and I, we can manually adjust the line. Because this report does not affect the ledger. It comes out of the ledger, but if I manually adjust
Yeah.
if I find five appropriations that are different than what town meeting did because Ellen put encumbrances in here, I'll just back the encumbrance out, drop in the town meeting vote. Because this record is strictly a spreadsheet in my computer. It's not in the general ledger. And then give you that, and I'll, I'll even highlight them in yellow so you can see, you know, it's changed.
Okay. That would do it.
If you're, if you want, I'll add a column, you know, that says why it's, you know what, let's not do that because that would get crazy. Now, one, one cautionary note. The fiscal, in the summary of revenue and forecast, the fiscal twenty-one column, I haven't got the foggiest idea if that ties out to the detail for fiscal twenty-one, which you're talking about. Because all I did for this summary spreadsheet is I took Denise's spreadsheet, eliminated the immediate past year, and then just added the FY twenty-one. So these are exactly the numbers that are, were in the computer. And if they don't tie out against the budget detail, that, I, I, it is just, just so much I can do to make this work. So please don't look at the twenty-one and say, I found a number that's off by three hundred and forty dollars. Because, you know, I can spend three hours chasing it. To what end, I don't know.
So, is that what we want to do?
I'm going to assume the twenty-one and the, and the, on the summary chart, it's titled at the top, Town of Groveland, Summary of Revenue's Expenditures. The only thing that I changed on this compared to what was already in the computer that you had from last year is the projected fiscal twenty-two column and the increased increase column. Otherwise, this document is the same. And I had to add a couple of revenue categories because they're new. The S R funds, that's a new revenue category. So other than that, I'm staying on.
Ruth, wait a second. What do you think about that?
Yeah.
I think that, I mean, I, I'm perfectly happy to go over the, because I kind of already went through and I did all that. And I'm perfectly happy to go over what I found with you and Ellen. I can meet anytime.
Sure.
Almost kind of anytime, but this week, but, um, but since also we're all here and we kind of did our homework, I would think it might be appropriate to have a high-level budget discussion also, and then we can follow up with the specifics of the numbers. I think that would be probably, um, I gather.
Beneficial?
Beneficial and a better use of time. It would kind of split the budget discussion up a little bit, if that sounds-
So let's, we'll proceed with that for at least the next twenty-five minutes. But outside of that, two weeks from today is too late?
So the warrant has to be posted on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth of April.
Prior to it getting posted, I have to A, write it.
Right.
And remember, folks, it's sixty-two pages long.
Right.
It is a massive job. And I haven't touched it yet, other than to go in and list all the articles so I know what they are. And start making inquiries about a few of them that I think we can do other things with to make it more streamlined. So it's got to get written. Then it's got to go out to every single department to proofread. Because it can't, there can't be a mistake on like the zoning articles that you did tonight. There can't be any mistakes in this thing. I do not yet have any guidance from the board, and the finance board can't respond until you respond on the capital budget. You've had that since December, but I, I have no guidance from you on what you want to do with it. That's a, that's a good chunk of the warrant. So between now and the nineteenth, and I don't want you to think nineteenth. I'd like everybody to think Friday, the sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Because the deadline is the nineteenth at five P M. But if it's defective in any way, and I've seen strange things happen when the sheriff or whoever, constable comes to tack it on the wall. So we want to be sure no later than Friday proceeding that everybody has seen it and signed off, which means I got to write it this week. So I'm going to go hide in a closet somewhere and I'm going to do, I'm not going to talk to anybody for the next seven days unless it's a question about the warrant. So by Monday, Tuesday next week, I'm going to send it out to everybody and say, here's the draft. Let me know if you see something wrong. And that'll be everybody who's got an article on the warrant.
Well, I'm asking is if we wait two weeks to the next scheduled selectman meeting, that that's probably too long.
Yes.
And then we, if we do a special meeting on the fifth, after we go through this high level for the next twenty minutes.
Yep.
And then we come back on the fifth for an hour or so, finalize that. That gives you more time to do what you need to do.
Yeah. That gives me time to put your recommendations in.
Okay.
Remember, you may change something in the budget. Even if all you do is endorse it, it's still, that's pretty simple because I just copy-paste it into the next column.
Right.
But if you change something, then I got to go in by exception and change it.
So let's plan on doing that for at least twenty, twenty-five minutes. We'll do the high-level budget thing that Ruth suggested. And then we'll plan on coming in Monday for at least an hour to finalize both capital and this budget.
Why don't I, why don't I do this to clear up that FY twenty-one column first? I'll talk to Ellen in the morning. She and I will go through the town meeting.
He's already told me that she can easily change those things.
I'm sure she's probably watching.
Yeah.
So we'll fix that in the morning to make sure that that column exactly duplicates what's in, at the town meeting vote. And if there's encumbrances or whatever else, we should just take them out, okay? Ruth, if you've got something, just send me an email. And while Ellen and I are doing that tomorrow, we'll make sure we check every one of those, okay? So, but the next time you see this, this FY twenty-one column on that will be identical to town meeting.
All right. So Phil had a question. Catherine, we're going to have a special meeting Monday night, so let's get something posted before Thursday.
Monday.
Okay, Phil, sorry.
I, I didn't have a question. I'm, I'm good. You get good answered as we went.
You want to start? High level, low level, your call.
Sure. Well, my high level is that we saw the new school budget, which is extremely large. And it's gonna be a, it, I think it's going to be difficult for us to accommodate. I think that coupled with the fact that we are in the middle of a pandemic, it's been a very difficult year for everybody. We have an interim finance director. We are soon going to be advertising for a town administrator. So my feeling is to just be very cautious, very conservative, to make as few changes to the budget and to the bottom line as possible for this budget cycle. And then going forward, when we have a permanent administrator, we can really start to prioritize changes that we need to make. Certainly, there's some changes we need to make now. But I don't think we can make them all at the same time. I think that we need to make changes slowly over time. We have made changes in the last few years. I think we need to make some more, but I think we need to be very careful. The other thing I would say is that we run a tight ship. We've been careful with our budget. In the five years that I've been on the finance board, we have increased our stable, well, we, we have initiated a stabilization. For O P E B, there was no stabilization. For capital stabilization, there was no stabilization. And for stabilization, there was maybe seven hundred thousand dollars or something. We've been careful. We've been cautious. We've been responsible. We've gotten ourselves to a good place. And we just need to keep that end goal in mind and continue to be conservative, especially now. And I know we've asked a lot of everybody in town, in town hall, outside of town hall, our residents. I mean, we've asked people to be kind and courteous, respectful, but we've also asked a lot of our teachers. We've asked a lot of our students. I can tell you that. You know, my husband is now working fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-hour days from home. It's a lot for everybody, and I acknowledge that. But I think we need to stay the course and still be careful.
All right. So are we going to get more granular than that as far as?
By the way, Ellen just pinged me. She is watching. And she said there are encumbrances in there, and that's guaranteed going to be the variation.
And is it simple for her to just-
She said it's easy for her to-
Re-run that from another-
Yeah, it's very, very easy. It's, it's probably a one-hour exercise to do it. No big deal.
So if we start with that tomorrow, does that get us a better foothold on what we're going to do Monday night? Or do we need to do more tonight?
I'd say if there's any budget items you want to, I, I already, I noted for myself what they are. So if there's any other ones you want to cover, I can say whether you're tempted or not.
What you outlined.
Now, just so the board understands, all that's going to change is, is a, is a small number of the FY twenty-one lines, because we're going to extract the encumbrances. The basic, so all you, all that's going to change your deliberation with respect to the budget is for, out of the multiple hundreds of lines, probably less than ten, the difference between what was appropriated and what was requested this year is going to shift a little. It's not going to shift a lot. So in looking at the fiscal twenty-two requests, you're not going to have massive new information. It's going to suddenly change your perspective on the fiscal twenty-two budget, because additional information is going to be miniscule.
Well, yes.
What I'm, what I'm saying is
It's going to change.
The fiscal twenty-two budget, as it's been requested, sooner or later, needs you to say this department request is approved or not approved or altered. I mean, we've got to get that done. If that's what, I, I'm just,
Okay.
I'm just cautioning you that there's not going to be a, a vast amount of new information next Monday night. You're going to, ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of what you got tonight is what you're still going to have. You're going to have a tenth of a one percent of new information next Monday. So there's not going to be any radical change in the information that you've got.
Ruth, what do you have for things that you highlighted when we were doing other stuff?
Is far as-
You said you had ten items that you-
That the, that the encumbrances were on, that they're different numbers.
Right, yeah.
So if you want to talk about the budget items that you think are of highest priority,
Yep.
I can say if they're in there or not. So we-
Yeah.
Let you do that.
Nope. You, I'm looking to you.
Or if you want to start at the top and go-
I'm looking to you, Ruth. Whatever you want to do. Your, your call.
Well, say we could start, we could start at some of the budgets that seem a little bit more straightforward. For instance, legal, which we just talked about. We budgeted sixty-five thousand last year. And so the requested number for this year that Kevin said that they were going up by ten dollars.
Yes.
Their rate.
Ten dollars per hour.
Right. So he put in a ten thousand dollar increase. That brings us to seventy-five.
I don't know. Yeah.
So, that's fine, right? Well, or, I don't know.
Well, it's kind of like the snow and ice budget, right? You don't want to under-budget that or under-fund that because then you're in danger of going over and you just don't know what that's going to look like. Where now we have the Comcast thing done. That's a big expense that's not going to be there next year. But who's to say that there's not going to be some other event that's going to require a lot of legal, so.
We might have a lawsuit, a lawsuit.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen in the next ten months. So, I mean, do you over-budget it to be safe? Yeah. And if this ends up being free cash out of it, then great.
Ten dollars an hour adds up to a, it's about two and a half percent. So it's not a big impact. Other, it's about two and a half percent on the hourly fee. So, you know, if you were tracking it, you'd increase his budget ten, uh, two percent. I've increased it a lot more than that. I mean, from sixty-eight-four with an encumbrance or sixty-five without the encumbrance to seventy-five, ten thousand might be too much, but as you say, it's a bit of a roll of the dice.
Thousand hours is what?
A thousand hours is a lot of hours.
Ten thousand, yeah. That's ten thousand, ten thousand dollars.
That's what it comes down to, right? Ten dollars an hour, ten thousand dollar increase. You're looking at a thousand extra hours for legal, right?
No, 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 not anywhere near that. No, no. No, seventy-five thousand divided, what's his billing rate? One sixty an hour? Anybody know?
I don't know.
I think it's one sixty. Nope, my phone died. Seventy-five thousand divided by one sixty, there's your billable hours. Not including expenses, which he bills for separately, but that's peanuts.
Divided by one sixty?
Yeah, about four hundred and sixty-nine hours.
Yeah, four hundred and fifty-nine hours is not a ton of hours. I mean, that's, you know. I mean, I'd be honest with you, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a finger, you know, wave. Because I, I mean, you know, do I know of any pending litigation? No. But I will also tell you, if you had actual litigation, you do not get a hundred and sixty-dollar an hour billing rate. Litigation bills out of full rate, which is probably three fifty to five hundred an hour.
It's about four and a quarter.
So there is no current litigation, but were it to develop, this budget would have to get supplemented by a substantial margin. So this is basically all the opinions, zoning opinions, your opinions. I think there'll be well, actually, I don't see a single big issue that I can tell you. This is going to suck up a big chunk of hours. So I would consider this to be sort of the routine, what's happened.
How are we running this year?
Hmm?
And this year, are we trending?
This year's an anomaly because of the Comcast.
Assuming nothing major happens in the next three months, it'll probably finish right on the button or very close. Could be a little high, a little low, but it's very close. Now, he's got a bill. I've only got bills through the end of January. Town councils are famous for lagging on their bills, so I've already got a reminder into them. And I think Ellen called them as well and said, would you please get your bill in? So hopefully they'll do that soon. But I don't know of any big extensive amounts of legal work that have happened over the last two months.
Comcast.
Well, the March report shows fifty-nine thousand dollars available.
Well, that's a good, yeah, that's a good point because I've got no bill on that. So I don't know how many hours he's rolled up.
But we have fifty-nine thousand dollars available.
Well, that's right. That, so that's correct. The, the Comcast legal fee comes out of the Comcast.
Yeah, so that should be, that's what I mentioned earlier, the bill, that I've got a note right here to check on that in the morning.
Thousand dollars in legal left, according to the variance report, right? Thirteen percent spent as of March.
Yeah, you've got the variance report, but that's only through the, that last bill at the end of January.
Okay, but that's still pretty close.
Yeah, it's close.
That far away.
Okay. No big surprises so far.
Okay.
So you could call it whatever you want. You could call it seventy. You could call it seventy-five. You could call it. Want to call it seventy?
My goal was to give you a budget which responded to the needs and priorities of the departments as they expressed them, if I thought they were reasonable. I mean, there were some things that didn't come forward because I told the departments they were unreasonable. No, I'm, and I said to them, if you want to present it, then go ahead, but I'm not supporting it. And so some of those things fell by the wayside.
But we could just let them find it, right?
The other goal was to give you a budget which got you, which terminated use of one-time, non-cyclical revenue, specifically free cash and overlay surplus. And I didn't initially think we could do that, but we ended up succeeding. So there, the fifty thousand from free cash that you've used every year to balance the budget and the eighty-five from overlay to transfer into O P E B, which is also balancing the budget because O P E B is an item in the budget.
It was the other, it was-
That money is no longer in the budget. You're not doing that anymore, which is a significant step forward. That's a good, good move for you. The other, the other thing that was very challenging was the Penn Tucket budget has an astronomical increase in it, frankly. And it's not necessarily, I haven't analyzed the school budget. So I don't think the school budget is necessarily up by a giant margin, but I will tell you that the chapter seventy formula shifted dramatically this year. So Merrimack got hit hard, we got hit hard, and Wes Boilston's assessment went up three thousand dollars. I was one of the- Ours went up like one-point-two million, theirs one up three thousand. So there's a fundamental change in the structure of your budget, which is your education budget is, is up astronomically. Now, that chapter seventy formula could shift again next year. We don't know.
It's the minimum required contribution.
That's part of the chapter seventy formula. I'm using shorthand, I'm sorry.
Right, so.
So the, the fundamental reality is you use two-hundred-and-fifty thousand out of Esser two money, which is one-time grant money in order to balance that Penticat budget. I've already told the superintendent and Greg, that's great. Budget's balanced this year. You've even got a sur, you've got a hundred-thousand-dollar surplus as it stands right now, with everything in and funded as requested, and the free cash and the state, and the overlay surplus out. That's all good news. But the reality is, next year, the Penticat budget, if it grows incrementally, and you don't have that two-fifty of Esser two funds, and the chapter seventy formula doesn't change, you're going to have a problem.
Right. So.
So just to add to that, I did spend some time on the minimum required contribution. And Grovelands went up thirty-eight percent. Merrimack's went up thirty-three percent. And Wes Newberry's went down twenty-eight percent. And then when you look at our overall allocation versus our percent of students, we have about thirty-eight percent of the budget allocated, and we have about thirty-eight percent of the students. So my concern is that if you allow this one-time fund to balance budgets, and you give out overly generous raises, that with, we will end up, next year, as they call it, what? Kicking the can down the road, we'll end up laying people off. And I don't want to do that to the staff here at our town.
I think that's a valid concern. I think it's something you should be aware of. I don't think the solution to that problem. I mean, if the Penticat budget is up seven, eight percent, and it is.
It's sixty percent of our town budget.
I don't think the solution to the problem is to cut your department, your police, fire, and all those other budgets.
I'm not saying cut.
Those, no, no, I know you're not. I'm just saying.
Okay.
Because those budgets collectively are only up two and a half odd percent. So if you take all, all of your town budgets that are only up two and a half percent, and you penalize them, because the Penticat budget is up seven or eight percent, I don't think that's a logical way to proceed. So the budget I gave you does not do that. It doesn't do that. But I did have a conversation with, with Greg, and I said, look, it balances this year. That's great news. And using the Esser funds is very generous, because they didn't have to do that. But I said, realistically, as you look at your budget next year, something's going to have to happen, because it's, it's, the budget, the Penticat budget grew in a non-sustainable way. You can't do it next year. If it grows six or seven percent again, it's not even a close call. You don't have the money.
Or if we don't get the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars again.
And you won't have the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
So if, if we have a hundred thousand dollars.
Conversation, that's why in the memo I gave you, I said, there needs to be a conversation between the Board of Selectmen, Finance Board, and Regional School Committee, because you've got to have a, you've got to figure out what's going to happen next year, because you've got a, you've got a gigantic problem looking at you on July one next year. And remember, when, we're not, you're not, you're going to have, I think, a pretty good free cash certification, and this is why. And I'll be speaking to you in more depth about this, but I got to let a little bit of the cat out of the bag. Some of our checking accounts have not been reconciled in a long time. I'm talking multiple years. And they're carrying huge balances. So I've got one account that's carrying a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar balance. When the entire bill warrant has been processed, everything's been paid that we know of, there's still a quarter million dollars sitting in that account, and we have no idea why. Now, the good news about that is, I can rake that account. I can pull it into, well, whatever. We might put it into stabilization. We can just leave it alone, let it fall to free cash next year. I can leave a little balance in there. Everybody discussed this with the bank. And any old checks that get presented against that will get funded on a check-by-check basis. But what I can tell you with a fair degree of certainty is that the lack of reconciling those checking accounts, balancing the checking accounts and reconciling them to the general ledger is a serious violation of proper finance. It's a multiple-year violation, and it has rolled up to the tune of many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars. Bad problem, but good news, because that's going to pop out into free cash next year. Second big problem, also good news, bad finance, but good news. It would appear that there has been no effort to collect overdue delinquent taxes for, looks like, five, six, seven, eight years now. So the year gets closed. The delinquent tax, the delinquent overdue payments, real estate, personal property, get put into something called tax title, which transfers them from a liability to an asset to protect us. But then there are many collection efforts that should happen in order to actually get the money in. And those collection efforts have not ever happened, or haven't happened in many years, put it that way. That's the bad news. The good news is, there's six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more than that, that we're, that's sitting out there uncollected. Now, I'm going to be giving, now, this is going to be in the audit report. We've just discovered all these things. I'm going to give you a plan for an aggressive collection effort against that six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I've already developed a plan with the bank for how to recapture most of that checking account money. So when all that starts to come in over the course of July one-twenty-one through June thirty-twenty-two, you're going to have a really good free cash certification next year. Now, and part of the reason you had a lot, and Ruth, you asked me this, why, why didn't free cash plummet on July one of twenty? Reason was twofold. Number one, because nobody chased the bad debt. And that, that, every single dollar you bring in, an uncollected tax that goes right to free cash, and it releases money from overlay surplus. It's a double whammy that Department of Revenue makes you reserve against an uncollected debt. So you get, for every dollar you collect, you get two dollars back. But that didn't happen. That caused free cash to go down. The second thing that happened is, the free cash from the prior year, we spent almost every penny of it. So there was nothing in the till flowing through the books. And so if you.
But we always did that. We've done that for five years now. We've spent all but fifty or a hundred.
Tell you, spending all your free cash is a really poor idea, because.
We don't spend it all.
Remember, free cash is the money in the checking account at the end of the year and when you start the new year. So if you budget this much money, and you spend that much money, the only money left is what was in the checking account at the beginning of the year. And if that's a zero, then it's a zero at the end of the next year. So given the fact that revenue was tight, this, is tight, was tight last year, and given the fact that nobody chased the bad debt, it had a double whammy, and your free cash plummeted from seven-hundred to two-hundred, bang, in just twelve, twelve months, it's all it takes. Your free cash on July one of this year is probably going to be worse, frankly.
It averages more like four-hundred. Last year, seven-sixty, there were some properties that were sold.
Whatever it averages, it plummeted like a rock, and that's the explanation why it did. You can't, in my career, I never carried more than two years of bad debt, and before that, I foreclosed. I took the property and I sold it. But you haven't had a foreclosure in Groveland in five, six years at least.
Kathy, go ahead.
I guess, just to kind of wrap this up, I personally, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm not really interested in pursuing foreclosures at the end of this pandemic. I would be interested to see what's been done and what the letters are. But I would proceed slowly, as we do have an unemployment rate in this town right now that I think is close to five percent. And, and I don't want to start dropping the axe on people. I do want to, I hear what you're saying, Kevin. I understand the kinds of things you're looking at and saying you could do this and do that. And I feel like when we hopefully go forward with a town administrator, that will be the individual that will actually get us onto those things. And I think for, right now, for myself personally, what I would like to be able to say about this budget is that, as best as possible, we're, we're trying to balance, and not say that we have surplus, because we know the surplus is fake, because it's based on this one-time money. And understand that this school budget is sixty percent of the town budgets, and two out of three towns can vote the assessment on us next year, and we have to pay it. So we don't have that much control when we see it grow by this kind of thing. And I would definitely spend time, and myself personally, as a member of this board, I will, I will devote time to looking at this formula and seeing what we can do about it. But for the here and now, for right now, I would like to be able to say that we're presenting a budget that is fair to all individuals, that gives our employees like a two percent raise, that covers necessary costs, and doesn't do much more beyond that. You know what I mean? The message to tell me now, I'd like it to be simple, clear, common sense, and it makes sense to people that perhaps have been out of work, or had people in their household out of work, so that we're not going out and saying, well, we need to set these people's salary according to industry this year. You know, I, I just don't think this is the year to do that. And, and we have tried in the past to bring people up, and we've been doing it in steps. But I think at this moment in time, to go forward to a town meeting with masks on, coming out of a pandemic, hopefully, we're going to feel a lot better. Keep it simple. Keep it simple. Keep it as close to in balance, in balance as we can, knowing that, that one-time money is in there. I guess that's, that's my message, in a nutshell.
Jason, you have anything, Ed?
We talk about the budget now?
That's what we've been talking about.
Kind of.
Kind of. All in and around, and just line items. This is what it is, this is what the increase is. Why is there an increase? Do we support the increase? I thought that's what a budget discussion would be more entailed.
Well, the side of it with the school SSR money is a big piece, Jason. That's a huge piece of our budget.
Sure.
Cannot be ignored. Cannot be ignored.
So right the second, no questions on?
No.
Until we go through line by line?
Yes.
Phil.
Uh, no, if we're going to go through a line by line, I'll save my questions.
Ed?
I'm all set.
All right, so let's go through line by line. Jason, you can lead us, how's that? You don't want to do it.
You can be our moderator.
Yeah.
Well, moderator budget.
I think in terms of the increases to the salaries, particularly like in the finance department, I think that's probably one of the largest increases in terms of salaries. And I want to make sure that we all agree that it's going to be sufficient to get somebody in here and staff the finance department appropriately moving forward.
All right. So are we starting with the town administrative budget?
Finance department.
Administrative assistant.
Yes. Find the town administrator. Because I know that what they were talking about in terms of what people are hiring for, the range, we seem to be limiting ourselves to the top range of a hundred and five. So if we, when we post that, it's going to be less. I think that's something that should actually at least be increased to one-twenty, so we can do that range of a hundred and five to a hundred and twenty.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Five is at the low.
Yep.
Ruth, finance committee, right? Hundred and twenty?
Yeah.
They recommend it.
Let's go.
The finance board has not officially voted on any of these numbers yet, so this is just discussion.
And then we have treasurer-collector?
I think the treasurer-collector is reasonable. And I agree with Kevin's statement that we can't really change some of the people that already make that money, particularly like the accountant and the assistant treasurer clerk.
So what are you, I'm not sure what you're saying. The treasurer clerk started out at twenty-two, seven, seven-oh.
This year.
Yeah, this year.
Yeah, which is going to be moved to the forty-three, so yeah.
Well.
That's, everything else on that line, I like. I just want to change that one thing, the finance director.
But the treasurer-collector has to go to the article, because that's part of voting the town administrator. Don't you think? Yeah. So that's why I thought we'd leave the assistant treasurer-collector, whatever you want to call it in this thing, just leave it alone and change things in the article when they vote. So people can see, like, the finance department board did a good job, or actually Joe did, showing us the change in cost on his presentation. Remember the amount he said it changes by? That would be in the article. And he said, okay, this is what we want to do and why, and here's the changes to these positions and why. That way, we don't bog down the omnibus with somebody calling holds right away in the start. Do you understand what I'm saying? If you just kind of level fund or two, two percent them, then make the changes in the article. It would be smoother. Otherwise, you're going to open up the debate on the town administrator before we get to the article. So you, like, you leave this as finance director salary, level fund it, you know, we're leaving it sit there. Which is how we did the change, when we went from treasurer elected to finance director. We had a special article after the omnibus, which said, if you vote yes on this, you will be changing this, this, and this. Boom. It was, it was very straightforward, very transparent. Nobody can say, you tried to hide it in the omnibus, if that makes sense to you.
Actually, that does make sense.
Okay, so that, all the changes would go in the article, and then we can kind of chew on that if we need to. But I think Joe's committee did a pretty good job of isolating it.
All right, Jason? Just that, that's all the line items you wanted to go through? Phil?
Okay. If we're going to go through line by line, I'm all for it.
Well, let's, let's keep in mind that it is almost nine o'clock.
I, I hear you. I hear you.
I think he's getting a second wind.
I'm going to start with the administrative assistant. I, I don't understand, I thought that was going to be temporary. I'm looking at the minutes clerk. I thought we agreed that we were going to keep the minutes clerk, and now it's been removed. I'm going to go down to the town accountant. I mean, God bless her, but I mean, you know, we had a lot of people that lost their jobs, lost their homes. These people were really lucky they had employment all year long. You know, I, I don't know how I'm going to go to somebody that lost their job and say I can justify a thirty-five percent increase for somebody. It's tough. Assessors managers, seven, seven-point-eight percent.
You did already do that with the building inspector's salary, and you've already done it with the health director's salary.
I don't know if that's a degree.
This isn't the precedent, but I would, I would submit.
Going down line by line.
I understand. I would submit, this is a much more critical position than any of the others that you've already increased the salaries on.
Yeah. Okay. Cemetery. It is, 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 is another one. Where am I here? Cemetery. Uh, well, before we get to cemetery, the tree warden.
Where is that?
Okay, that's fine. That went up by ten percent.
Where is the tree warden budget?
The tree warden is right under total education.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'll go and do it.
It's gone up by ten percent. We were trying to hold everything to two. It's a little bit more than two.
Yeah, why is that?
Let me see. Road machinery expense, up twenty percent. Need to have an explanation why it's twenty percent.
Yeah, that's a shift, if you notice. Because, frankly, because those bills have become much more expensive in recent years, because the fleet is aging. And so we had to put some, we took, put more in there and took it out of somewhere else, and I'd have to go back and look at my notes.
Okay. Rubbish contract. We have it in here as a five percent increase. I know contract expires on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, right?
Yeah, I'm talking to.
Have a hard, have we not negotiated a hard number yet with those, so?
No. I'm talking to the current vendor tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, and he's giving me his proposal for a five-year renewal. And then based upon that proposal, which I'll bring to you guys when, once I get it and understand what he's proposing, and the board of health has to be involved, because it's actually, it's actually their purview under the law. Then there'll have to be a decision made whether we're going to take it out to bid or not. And I can't tell you yet, because I have no idea what they're going to propose.
All right. Cemetery wages, full-time, twenty-two and a half percent increase. You know, some of these things are just so hard to justify in the middle of a pandemic when.
Yes, please.
Can I make a quick comment on the cemetery? So we met with, we have met with the cemetery, and, and the cemetery commissioners just said, you know, they felt that he was lower paid versus some other departments. But I also had researched, and I have so many notes here, but maybe two.
here, but maybe two or three years ago, he, he also got a large increase that was, I think, at least a $12,000 increase to bring him up to parity to where he was. So we have, we have increased him to a healthy spot in, to where, to where they asked in recent time. So.
So you're, so you're in agreement with another 22 and a half percent?
No, I mean, I'm in agreement with a 2% cost of living.
All right.
Would be my recommendation.
You're with me. Let's see. And the bottom line is, you know, I look at it as it stands now, an eight and a half, almost eight and a half percent increase year over year. I just don't know how that's sustainable. On the revenue side, I don't think this 250,911 should be in the revenue side because it's really not revenue. It's, it's, they're not giving us money. They're basically discounting what they're charging us. So I think it should be shown in the, in, in the PRSD budget as a reduction to that amount as opposed to revenue, which it really is, by, by the strict definition of revenue, it's not revenue. It's a credit from one of our vendors. And I think, next year, when somebody goes to look at this, they're going to say, "Well, we had 20 million, almost $21 million." It's not, it's not really true. And I, actually, I question the revenue side because that just looks, it looks, it just doesn't pass the sniff test to me. It looks like it's grown by much more than it would reasonably have grown by. And that, that is causing me cause for concern. Because if we can't approach that revenue number next year, and these, and then these expenses are locked in, we are so, you know what, next year and the year after.
Right.
You all set?
I think that's about it for my, yeah.
Ed, anything on your end?
Well, some of the same stuff that Bill had mentioned, but one that he didn't. Municipal Buildings, Public Relations Townwide, 110,000. That, that seems
That's, Utilities is 110,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public Relations.
Seventy-two hundred.
Is 7200, but that was taken out.
I'm sorry. I'm reading, reading it wrong. Thank you.
Yeah. I use a rule sometimes. Try to follow the right lines.
That's what I'm doing now.
Anything else, Ed?
Um, no.
So it seems like we have some homework to do. And then Monday, we'll come back, hopefully for only an hour or so. And then reconvene our thoughts on some of these line items, whether something's revenue or whether something is a refund, and try to come to some agreement on the budget so we can approve it and start writing the town warrants.
Could we also just take a quick look at the Conservation? I know we want to bring that employee on board, but I think the amount of money that's been, that comes from VZ, that's outside the town budget. So
Part of it comes from VZ.
Right. But shouldn't the part of the salary that we're paying just be in the omnibus? Only our part in the omnibus? The VZ part, Mike handles all this VZ stuff outside of the appropriations at town meeting. He handles it through his revolving account. So
What's listed in there now? I don't even
Forty-two thousand.
Where is it?
For the Conservation Agent. So
Economic Development Planning.
Right. So, so I just, I mean, I'm for supporting the position, but I just want to make sure we only raise and appropriate from taxes the Conservation Agent, because that's what the description says.
So you're saying that that number should be 21,000 or so?
Well, whatever the split was, was it 50/50? Or was it 50/50? I don't remember.
I think it was 50/50, but Kevin's showing it 44,000 in the revenue line.
Yeah, we're taking 21,000 out of the Conservation Receipts Account.
Yes.
21,000 out of the VC revolving account.
But see, that's for an adminis-
Two thousand more out of the Conservation
Right. But I think that's for an administrator, for VZ, and that's, position is not a part of our omnibus. Only the Conservation Agent position is part of our omnibus. So I don't want people at town meeting to ask me why the Conservation Agent is going up to $42,000, because I'm going to have to say, "Well, we're hiding a VZ Park Administrator in there." What else? You know, that's not going to fly. You know, because VZ is operated separate from the town budget, except for their revolving account.
Well, I have to
Yeah.
It, right now, the 44,000, of the $42,000 salary is carried in this budget. Okay? Whatever it is that Mike's intended.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying it shouldn't be
It's in this budget. So the 44,000, the 42,000 of revenue offsetting it has to also be in the budget. Now, I may end up doing it a different way in the warrant.
Well, yeah, I think the omnibus should just have the Conservation Agent.
This is, this is grossing up all your expenses and all your revenues to compare them to see if you're in balance.
Okay, yeah.
So that's all this spreadsheet does.
Okay. And so on the omnibus, we can just list with the Conservation Agent.
It's, I've got to figure that out.
Oh, okay, okay. That was my concern, because I just didn't want that to come up at town meeting and have everybody going like
Because I don't know quite how that's going to work. Your point is very valid.
Well, because we vote him of a revolving account.
Yeah, your point is very valid, because one, one thing is in the budget as
Right.
And the other thing is in VC.
Well, see, he's had
And they got to show, they got to be voted differently.
Well, we have the revolving account, and so he hires a manager for VZ. He's always paid his own stuff out of VZ, out of his revolving.
All right. So that's our plan on the budget, right? Everyone's agreement Monday night. We'll come back at 5:00.
And I'm going to assume that you will also vote the capital budget that night?
We're going to have to, right?
Because we don't
That should be a little bit easier because, you know, either we have it or we don't have it.
Yeah, the, just so that you'll know, if you look in the, in the new department, the planning, conservation, et cetera, you will see a $42,000 salary expense.
No, no, I saw that. That's, that's fine. That's not what I'm worried about. I, I'm worried about what presents at town meeting, that we only have in the omnibus the amount for the Conservation Agent.
No problem.
That's all. So we don't have to try to, I don't want to say there's VZ Park Administrator hidden in there.
So I will bring, I will ask the department heads who have capital budget requests in to be either physically in a room, out waiting, on Zoom, whatever their preference is, so you can ask them questions. And Mike, could we have that as the first item so we can get them in and out, and then the operating budget afterwards? Because that's really just the board and us.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Do you want me to see if I can get a form and get Finance Board here, and maybe we can vote?
I would love to have a joint meeting. Let's
Joint meeting Monday night if they can?
I'll bring some popcorn.
Because, because our schedule is to vote on the 14th.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll bring some popcorn and some drinks, and we'll, we'll make it a party.
You can't eat popcorn with a mask on, Mike would. Last I saw.
That's the one
If anybody could do it, it'd be Paul Farris, and we all know that.
CDC does allow you to remove your mask in order to eat and drink, so we're good.
That's true.
We're covered.
We'll get straws, big straws. All right. So budget's done for now.
For now.
Okay.
Are we done?
Where's my agenda?
Please don't find it.
Um, all right. So that's, that's, I'm going to say there's no old business.
Oh, good.
You don't have any Finance or Finance Director time, right, Kevin?
Let me just make sure I don't have anything critical.
All right, that's it. None?
Yes. I need, does anybody have a name and phone number for the town moderator so I can call the gentleman?
Dr. Dark? He's the dentist right on the corner over there.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
Stop in and see you. He loves people stopping in.
Yeah, he's free cleaning.
All right. So we have a correspondence letter dated 3/17/2021 from Pennsyltown Regional School District regarding Groveland Assessment Year.
Yeah, that was the
Twenty-two.
Oh, Mike, this is very important. League of Women Voters wants to be able to use this room for their candidates tonight.
Yep.
That, they'll be in full compliance with the law. No, nobody except the candidates being broadcast, no visitors. Can the guys are okay with that?
What, what night is that?
She gave me it, and I don't remember what it is. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
I'll make sure it's a night when nobody else is in here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Uh, all right. So let's get someone to get us out of here at 9:10.
Beth said you were going to vote as, whether you were going to change the day of the town election or not.
I can't vote on it. Ed can't vote on it. So that's up to the other three.
I see no reason to change it. Last year, we changed it because we didn't think people could come and vote.
The way this works is the
Ruth, we almost got out of here.
Posting requirement proceeds from the 14 days prior to the election, which is why, right now, the election where it is, we have to post by the 19th, because the election drives the posting, because the posting is the warrant and the election together.
So you're assuming it's staying?
Right. So I'm assuming the election isn't going to move because you haven't voted. Now, if you want to vote to change the election, you can do so, provided the election occurs prior to June 30. Now, I've been told the town is used to having the election after the budget, and of course, we've put that around this year.
Yeah, but there's no
I was asked to bring this to your attention so you can decide if you want to do anything different. It doesn't matter from my point of view. I can post the warrant either way as long as you finish next Monday night.
Let's just
Jason?
Make a motion that we adjourn at 9:00.
No, 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 no. We got to talk about
We're not moving the election.
Moving around. I'm just taking a poll. Do you want to move the meeting, the election? A bill?
No.
No.
All right. So we
Okay. So now we can make the motion. Go for it, Jason.
Hurry up so we can get out here.
Yeah, Jason. Really.
He just tried.
I might just bring something else up now.
No.
I tried to close it.
Brett, shut us down.
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at 9:10.
Don't move.
Second. We can do that. We can all sit in one room. We'll